You know, if everybody could just, you know, bear with us and we'll get through it in as expedient manner as we possibly can. And we'll remind everybody, remind myself at this time. Actually, mine's already turned off. If you've got a phone or something that might otherwise, if you want to play your favorite country song, please mute it at this time. And if you feel the need to have a secondary conversation, it's a little warm out, but please, you know, step to the back, don't interrupt the meeting, or go outside. All right. So with that, I have no gavel again, so we're going to call the public -- well, now, first of all, wait a minute, I gotta read the Rules of Order for Public Zoning Matters. All right. Rules of Order for Public Hearing Zoning Matters. The hearing shall be provided over by the mayor. After calling the hearing to order, the mayor shall request that parcels of property which is the subject of the zoning proposal be identified and read. Following such identification and reading, the development director's recommendation shall be presented. The mayor and city council shall cause the director's written recommendation to be made part of the record. Proponents of each proposed zoning decision shall then be allowed a total of 10 minutes for presentation of data, evidence, and opinion concerning the zoning decisions. If all 10 minutes are not used, the proponents' remaining time may be reserved for rebuttal. Opponents of each proposed zoning decision shall then be allowed a total of 10 minutes for presentation of data, evidence, and opinion concerning each zoning decision. The presentation times may not be reduced but may be extended by majority vote, provided they are expanded equally for proponents and opponents. Anyone wishing to speak must come with a microphone and give their name and address. City clerk, do not speak unless you have a microphone and have been recognized. So with that, we will then call the public hearings to order. First item of public hearings is a proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan of Peach Street Boulevard. Now, look at that. Asking you, shall the city -- order. I just always wanted to do that.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. As you spoke, the item number one here is a minor revision to the comprehensive plan we identified as 216, Plan-01. It would amend the future development map in order to allow portions of Peach Street Boulevard to be rezoned as proposed by the city council in the companion rezoning case coming up later. The future development map has to be amended before these zoning changes can be done because our unified development ordinance requires that no zoning action be taken that's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and the future development map. So by this amendment to the future development map, there would be 25 parcels moved from one character area to another. Six parcels would be changed from character area three, which is Motor Mile, to character area five, Central Gateway. Nineteen parcels would be changed from character area seven, Peach Street Boulevard, Carter, to character area five, Central Gateway. This would consolidate the Central Gateway character area comprehensive plan along the northern side of Peach Street Boulevard, basically from the park beyond Peach Street property up past Longview. So we feel like this change would then open the door for the city council to consider the resuming action that is proposed in case 2016-Z03. Tonight's the time for the public hearing on the amendment to the future development map.
Very good. Thank you, Gary. John, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay, very good. With that, then, we'll have 10 minutes for those wishing to speak in favor. All right. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan, please come with a microphone. All right, council, have any questions?
Um, I don't have a question. I actually have a request for a revision, I think, that this should come out now. I'm trying to find it up. Is this on this? This is on -- okay. On section -- oh, this is very pleasant. On number seven, that if -- this map that I have on here is really pleasant, so I'm not quite sure where I am. Which actually contains the chocolate center? Oh, five. Okay, on parcel number four, lot number three, if you want to call it that, you have included the business that is on the corner of Admiral Drive and Longview Drive. And across the street, across Longview Drive from that is another business that is zoned, well, right now it's zoned, Neighborhood Commercial One. And then you're rezoning the other one to Village Commercial. I don't think that that one belongs being Village Commercial, I think it belongs being Neighborhood Commercial One. Just that one lot.
Are we now talking? Are we right now talking about character areas and would that still apply, or?
Insofar as we want to assure that the comprehensive plan is consistent with the zoning map change, then they're gonna follow hand in hand, and we need to adjust the parcel probably in both future development map and in the zoning map change that you proposed. We have advertised this in a manner that means that if you wish to add another parcel to the rezoning and future development map change, we're gonna have to recycle this process and we become the first and second reader of the zoning map and we can change the future development map differently next month if we re-advertise this.
I guess we need to discuss what the changes, if they do need to be changed, because I don't know that they do need to be changed.
Yeah, I don't know if they do or not for this map. Like I said, I touch Peach rather than margin against posse, if you want to do it. What is included in?
Well, there's a list of parcels, and that's --
And addresses.
Yeah. That is attached to the resolution. And that's the particulars. And that itself is meant to conform to these specific addresses being changed.
Yeah, but I don't know what the address is for that building. I did not write it down.
Yes, ma'am.
You know what I'm talking about, that?
I really don't.
Okay.
Do you like, do you bring something later in the meeting I can go back to?
Well, we're, yeah, we're not gonna go back to it. You know, if you have it, that's great, and if you don't, that's, you know, we're gonna move on. Can I ask a question?
Sure. I was just gonna ask, you know, in this process, there's been a lot of conversation about it, and it seems like we've got this, this technical aspect of making sure that we adjust the comprehensive development plan before proposing that there be major zoning chains like this. And I think that what we're probably missing is the idea that there be more of a charrette-type meeting for the community to be able to get everyone to kind of come and weigh in and learn about the process and see the pros and cons, or the pluses and the minuses, to assure that, one, that this is something that the community actually wants. I've not heard, I know that, you know, council member Mesa has had some, you know, community requests for this type of action and what have you. I've not heard anybody request this type of action, and I've only heard about how much this type of action will potentially create hardships for the business community. And all due respect to the process, then, if in fact we do have to go back through and engage in the change of the comprehensive development plan, I would, I just don't understand why there isn't more of a community input effort to accomplish that objective, rather than have it be a legislative discussion about what lots need to be, what, you know, what zoning or whatever. So I, it would be my recommendation, if, to move forward, it would just simply be my recommendation, we entertain an idea, a change to the comprehensive development plan in more of a way that is consistent with how the comprehensive development plan is created in the first place.
Any other questions or comments?
What I'm looking at, what I understand is that parcel number three, if you will, is Motor Mile Corridor now. That's the character area, that's how it's gonna be characterized. And that goes on the, I suppose it's the west side of Peach Street Boulevard, from Longview Drive all the way up to 285. So my question is, how does that tie with the rezoning that we have, we were presented with?
Is that done? Is that done?
One of the parcels you're talking about are already currently zoned in C1 zoning map, so you're talking about parcel across the street?
So what, all we did was take the seven parcels that city council asked, we overlaid those on the future development map, and you might say scissors and cut them out, so to speak, and paste them down, so that those parcels are now moved over to a comprehensive plan category that allows Village Commercial as one of the permitted zoning units. So everything took the line for lines corresponding to the zoning.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, but what's going on? This is, this is the change to the comprehensive plan.
That's correct.
And how is, if we're going to change, this is the old, and we're changing this to the new, right?
VC's not allowed in the Peach Street Boulevard corridor of the comprehensive plan. And so that's, and I guess a piece of the Motor Mile sticks down too far on view, and I think that's what he's talking about adjusting. He's not really, according to the map, it looks like in C1, the particular you're talking about, is okay in the Peach Street corridor, Peach Street Boulevard corridor, where it is. I think that's defined, I don't, I don't think this is, this character, I'm talking the comprehensive plan is to be changed, that, in that area for that. He said C1 is allowed in that, in the area that it already is part of the comprehensive plan, we're not talking about changing. We're talking right now, we're talking about changing the comprehensive plan.
Do you all have any more questions for the staff? All right, we're gonna move on then, and you can probably continue the discussion because we're on the proposed amendment to the official zoning map of Peach Street Boulevard.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a companion action. City council actually had this first read, ready for the second read when we discovered that the future development map was not even, not compatible with the change that you wanted to make. So this is a proposal to change the zoning designation of 57 properties from Carter Commercial to Village Commercial in the map that you see above, in that darkest border that has a hatched line. Those parcels today are zoned Carter Commercial, which looks a little more dark, dark orange, and color change to more of the dark magenta color means Village Commercial. So those are parcels that were changed from Carter Commercial to Village Commercial, as requested by the council. So this has come before you already, but we did not have a public hearing tonight. It's intended to be the public hearing, so it's that any further public comment is going to be used, and then the second reading could take place on September 20th at your business meeting, and you can take action on this amendment if you wish.
Thank you, Gary. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed amendment to the official zoning map, please come up. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition?
I'm Doug Dillan, Department of Parks and Forest, and I represent Shamri Plaza. And first of all, I think that we would ask that Shamri Plaza be pulled out of this overlay. As you know, there's been a significant attempt to have redevelopment plan approved, which was not approved by council, but that doesn't mean that, that doesn't necessarily still play in what is long-term future for Shamri Plaza. As you, as you can imagine, it's a significant property in your city, and it needs to be developed long-term in accordance with your goals and objectives, but also balancing those goals and objectives of the property owner. The issues that we've got with, with the proposed overlay are contained really in the third paragraph of the letter that I've just submitted and asked me to be included in the record.
Yes, sir.
And that is, the VC category permits an FAR above the four. We would suggest, in an attempt to compromise, if the FAR is important to the city, that we would maintain the existing 2.5 FAR, which is currently on the property. The other issues that are a concern to us are, one, the elimination of the drive-through. Why? To what extent does drive-through facility have an adverse impact on the public health, safety, and welfare? Likewise, why does a gas station that also might sell convenience food products also have a negative impact to the extent that you must regulate it out of this particular area? And likewise, finally, UPS? What in the world is wrong with UPS? If it's all related to traffic, I'm gonna submit to you, under 1961 decision by the Georgia Supreme Court, you can't use traffic or the impact of traffic in an urban environment to deny or change or eliminate a use on the property. So having said that, what we would ask is that, as a compromise, that we would, we would let our density remain at 2.5. We would ask that as a matter of right, the drive-throughs be allowed, along with the gas station and the UPS store, so that we don't, we don't create a non-conforming use or status for those particular properties. We think that that gives you a limit on, on what is gonna be allowed within this corridor. It prevents the expansion if you think these uses are unconstitutional and against the public health, safety, and welfare of your city. It gives you an opportunity to limit them, yet at the same time, you don't create a non-conforming situation that's gonna cost this particular property owner $2.5 million at a minute. So that would be our suggestion as a, as a compromise. Otherwise, obviously, we'd like to see them left in. We would, we would prefer the CC designation over the VC designation, even though the VC designation does allow some additional density. The density doesn't really do us any good if we don't have uses that want to be there. So we would limit our 2.5 overall density, along with the prohibition of the elimination of these uses. Were available for any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Council have any questions? All right, next item on the agenda then is 3693 Clermont, 1959 and 1965, which is a great year, on Bragg Street. Hold on a second, sir, we gotta hear from the staff.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is an action to consider approving a development of community impact proposed at this location for a climate-controlled self-storage facility consisting of 81,312 square feet. That includes 3,000 square feet of commercial on the ground floor, 600 storage units above, via three-story building with a basement. Last month, you approved the rezoning of this parcel from NC2 to Carter Commercial with some conditions. The applicant has asked as well with this DCI for a number of variations for the unified development ordinance. First variation is from Section 230-9 UDO, requiring buildings be separated by a minimum of 15 feet. They don't meet that on the second, on the south side, where they're adjacent to an existing restaurant. Second variation is from Section 240-13 H2F, that requires a minimum of 50% of the exterior building materials to be brick masonry. Third variation is from Section 350-2C, that requires an interparcial driveway and sidewalk, sidewalk access from the subject property to the adjacent parcels on the north and east. Fourth variation is from Section 350-25A, that requires new buildings with 20,000 square feet or more to bury the existing overhead utilities. They're willing to do that on the Clermont side and not on the Bragg Street side. This has also gone to the architectural review board for their review. Staff recommendations were for approvals with conditions, including the latest variation subject to the following conditions. Approval is subject to development and substantial conformity with site plan received on August 18th, among the architectural plans and elevations from the Stein Investment Group received on August 4th, with revisions to the plan required by the general mayor and council. The second condition would be that the proposed first-floor plan be revised to include a minimum of 100% of the building frontage on Clermont and 50% of the building frontage on Bragg Street to consistent commercial office space, not including the rental office. That will be commercial, retail, office, or restaurant uses. This actually was a condition of the resuming approval last month. The third condition is an interparcial connection consisting of a 24-foot wide driveway being constructed from the parking lot to the side property line on the south, and a location approved by staff. Basically, that requirement was here when they started the site plan, but they decided to grade and fill, so it's, and now there's a big drop-off from their property to the adjacent property that's part of their plan, if they can't make that work. Number four, at least 50% of the exterior walls of the building, in addition to the facade on Clermont Road, should be based with brick. Number five, proposed signage plan, Chief S. One dated August 3rd, is incomplete, should be revised and resubmitted as the master signage plan, then be subject to review and approval of the ARB and city council. Number six, the location of Stormwater at the yearly south property line shall be redesigned based on a hydology study and is approved by the city engineer. Number seven, existing overhead utilities shall be buried. Number eight, the applicant shall provide the curves discovered along the south side of Bragg Street as per the standings of UDO for a local street with approval of the public works director. Number nine, the long-sake plan should be revised to include recumbence for a specimen tree, then shall provide a minimum of 20% of the required tree density be remaining placed on site. ARB reviewed this application and agreed with all of these conditions with three exceptions. Condition number three, ARB prefers to the city council, but notes that interparcial connection referred to by staff may not be physically possible due to the grade difference with the adjacent parcel, 14 feet. Number four, ARB recommends that at least 50% of the exterior walls of the building be placed with brick, except for the eastern facade that faces the PDK airport. Condition seven, ARB does not recommend burying the overhead utilities on the Bragg Street range of the property. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Gary. John, do you have anything to add? I was gonna ask, anybody who wants to come to the microphone and speak in favor of this application?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, I'm Doug Dillan, Department of Parks and Forest, and we represent, I couldn't, I wanna ask Jason Linska to come up at this point and join me. The issues that we've got, I think the staff report and the ARB recommendations are fine. You know, we basically got issues with, with the interparcial access requirement, burying of the utilities, the percentage of brick that need to be on the property, and also the percentage of retail on the site. So I'm gonna ask Jason to sort of take you through what they are showing as, and I've given you renderings of the, of the buildings, which I'm gonna submit to you, and my opinion is far better than what we got there now. But I'm gonna ask that Jason sort of go through why they have designed the building the way they have, what effect that's gonna have. And then I will come back and talk about the cost, the utilities provision makes no sense to me, and, and the other uses that we're, that we're looking at, particularly in that activity. So Jason, if you want to talk to them about what you're gonna do.
Jason Linska, Stein Investment Group, I'm in the plan. So I guess, as Doug said, there's really only four of these nine staff recommendations that we wanted to vary from. The first one is, you know, I'm not sure if it's wording or if it's burying, but the first one is the, the minimum of 100% of the building frontage on Clermont and 50% on Bragg Street, so it consists of commercial space, not including the rental office. The goal there was to, instead of doing 75 and 75, was to do 100 on Clermont, because that's the, obviously, the most important facade of the building. And then, as you turn down Bragg Street, it's a dead end, as you guys all know, and there's, there's no commercial down Bragg Street or no, nothing, other than a PDK gated entrance. So the goal was to do 50% on Bragg Street, instead of 75%. So what we did was we turned the corner with the commercial, as we did 100% on Clermont, turned the corner on Bragg, and then what we did was we used our, our office in the back, which we sell, you know, we have both a rental office and also a commercial sale, so we sell boxes and moving supplies and all kinds of things. And that's the rest of the percentage on Bragg. So along Bragg, the way we've designed it here, we have, it amounts to a little over 54% of commercial space. And you can kind of see in this rendering up here on the top, the top elevation there is the Bragg Street elevation. Bragg Street actually goes uphill from Clermont pretty significantly there, so the rear commercial space is actually on a higher floor than the front commercial space. So we have a grid makeup in between those two commercial spaces, which is what you see there, that angle, angle going up from one to the other. So that, we were, I guess it depends on interpretation, on if it's rental office, or is this sales, retail sales, or, I'm not sure. But our intention was to do this, which is about 54% of that Bragg Street frontage. And then the next one would be the interparcial connection. The, you know, if you would, I'm not sure how to flip slides. Can we flip slides? Probably need to go a few slides. There's an area over there.
An area?
Yeah. So the connection would be in the rear of the property. So what we did was, there's a curb cut currently on Clermont Road to this property, it's an automotive repair shop. So we're removing the curb cut on Clermont Road altogether and putting our curb cut on Bragg Street. Oh, I might have to go speak to him. Okay, regardless. So our interest is in the back, as you guys can see the site plan. We have one sort of alley behind our property where the loading will take place for customers, so back on Bragg Street away from Clermont. The connection would be, if you look at this lower left, I'll use that, that lower left sort of parcel map, it shows our green property. That finger coming down towards the bottom would be the, where interparcial access would happen. It, it currently dead ends into the back of the Mid Shopping Center that the Atlanta Intifan Land owns. So it literally dead ends right into the back of the building, and we're, and there's a hole there now, we're gonna be filling there and bringing it up to grade with Bragg Street, so that our drive is flat from Bragg Street, so they're not going down through the hole. When you do that, we're about 14 feet higher than the shopping center, and it comes into the back of the shopping center. So it didn't seem to make feasible sense, you know, to make a connection there to the back of their, to their center. We also have just limited space here, it's only an acre, an acre site with a funky shape to it, so it's just, it's a bit of a challenge. The next one was 50% brick on the exterior walls. We've done more than that on Clermont, and I guess, and Gary, I don't know if you could clarify for me, but we kind of looked at it a couple different ways, but the, you know, we have a lot of glass, so I think we're supposed to take out that glass on those percentages?
Yes, that doesn't, you have a one way or the other.
Right, so you don't consider glass at all. So it's just percentage of the overall thing, so glass sort of, in some senses, counts against you.
Solid material, so.
Right. So we have a lot of glass, which has an effect on it. So we have a lot of glass, which has an effect on it, but we, we're basically doing mostly brick, or all brick up on Clermont, the whole entire facade is brick and glass, a couple of accents. And then what we did was we did less brick as we went back towards the airport, along Bragg Street, and then as you can back behind the shopping center. That was conceptually what we were trying to do. Well, each facade, again, I sort of disagree with how it's calculated, I think it should, I think glass should be considered because it's a premium material, it looks good. You know, if we took away glass, our curb percentage would go up. Does that make sense? So, not considering the glass, we're 37 percent on the Bragg Street side, we are 60 percent on the, well, it's 100 percent on the building in front of Clermont, if you consider the one that's 160 feet back, it's 58 percent. And then, the other two sides are 30 percent and 30 percent. And 30 percent is also the rear facing PDK. So ARB said we didn't need to do any curbs over, I just think it looks, it'll look better. We're going to do 30 percent on the rear facing PDK. Right. And then the last one is the overhead utilities. There's a, there's a utility line going along Clermont, which for the UDO, we would be okay burying that along the street. There's some pretty heavy lines that go from Bragg Street back to PDK, that serve PDK, and that's the only thing they serve. It seemed a little like a hardship to bury those lines. We spoke with our Georgia power rep, we worked with him, he said they'd have no interest in letting us bury those, or participating, but I don't know if that's a factor, but those lines really aren't seen, they just go down Bragg Street to PDK. That's it. Thank you.
The ordinance calls for new development. We, anyway, is looking at what you consider new development. This is existing, this is not a new subdivision, this is not a new corporate area, et cetera, which would require, I think there's a way to interpret whether or not those lines need to be buried versus, versus not, you know, I'll tell you, it's a barrier, as you probably know, it's a very expensive process, and I'm not sure Georgia Power loves to do it. So, we would just say it's a bad game, that that position do. We're available to answer any questions if there's any opposition, we refer to mayor time if any, but thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So we do have about a little over a minute, if anybody else wishes to speak in favor. Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the variance request? No? All right. The council have any questions?
I have a question for the applicant on, in our, in our package, not what was handed out today, but in our package, it shows about a third of the building that faces Clermont Road is this yellowy-beige color with no windows. In the package, it's got penetration. Is, the penetration is what we can expect?
Yeah, so those areas that you see, that yellow area on the right, it's about 160 feet back. So, actually...
What do you mean, what?
So the building is kind of an L shape, if you look at the site plan, so that, that part you see on the right is a little deceiving on a two-dimensional elevation.
It is, it is very deceiving. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Right, so the sort of storefront area is what's on Clermont.
And it's actually behind the building next door, isn't it?
It is.
Okay.
That's right.
Honda.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify what the handout. You have Bragg Street elevation and then Clermont elevation, and the other two are south elevation and east elevation. So I'm going to assume that if the one is east elevation, Clermont is a west elevation.
Correct, correct.
And then, south elevation is, with the opposite of Bragg, which is facing a mint, that would be what you're calling the south elevation.
That's right.
Correct, check. And this is, like she said, this is not part of the package, but this is something we would include in the conditions.
Absolutely, but we do request it may be made a part of the record.
Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification, the only way to do that would be for the council to make it as part of the condition, because what's part of the record is actually what was submitted to staff and what they reviewed. The only way to actually, or it'd be as if one of the council members are in the motion that the council would agree upon, is that those, those renderings or that look be what is approved, or not.
So my question would be, do these amendments have a designation, so if that's what we decide to do, we can...
Gary, do you have any kind of...
There's a date on them.
Yeah, it's, September 15th is on the... If, if council were to refer to these particular renderings that were just handed out and you have copied, you would know what they are?
Yes, sir, we'll date them as of today, and if the applicant sends it to me digitally, we can include that in our final report.
And it's got a September 15 date on it, just like...
Very cool. All right.
I said, was a small comment. Gary, I was just noticing in your condition number five, that you were, as a technical piece of your recommendation, that you were suggesting that something be done, and that the applicant get the approval of the ARB and of the City Council. And I would recommend that you defer to council for final approval, because the way it reads currently is if the ARB would have denied them and we approved it with this type of condition, then they would, then City Council would not have been able to approve it beyond the scope of ARB's denial. Is the way I, is the way I read that, just a, just a little something.
City Council would govern, so I'll try to edit it accordingly. City Council prefers, change the wording.
All right, anything else? Okay, thank you, gentlemen, we're going to move on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next item on the agenda is 5,000 Peachtree Boulevard sign variance for Chase Bank.
Yes, Mayor, Council, the Chase Bank building is already under construction, but they have requested variance from the sign ordinance. The location is 5,000 Peachtree Boulevard, which is right in the corner of Johnson Ferry and Peachtree Boulevard, adjacent to the Lowe's property. They request additional signage. What they are entitled to by the ordinance in Section 260, 6B, 2A, they're entitled one sign for the wall, and then a monument sign on each side that has a curb cut. In this case, the building has two curb cuts, so they're already entitled to a monument sign and a building sign or a wall sign on Johnson Ferry side and on Peachtree Boulevard side. But their parking lot is around the back, I guess you would say, if you're facing it from Peachtree Boulevard, and they believe they need another building sign over the back door. Basically, the back door serves the parking lot, and that's where they want to put another large Chase Bank sign, which would face sort of the north, I guess, or west. So, staff has reviewed their, their application, we understand the logic, and we recommend that you wish to approve this, that it be conditioned to the following condition. The third sign shall be limited in sign area to 44 square feet, such as the building sign already proposed on the north side. They have two signs right now, the biggest sign is 60 or 80 something square feet on the Peachtree Boulevard side, but on the shorter side of the building, they have a 44 square foot sign, and on the back side, they wanted to do another big 60 or 80 square foot sign, and I'm just saying, why not just use a smaller sign if you're going to get another sign that I don't think you need, but you need it just to say Chase Bank, because people come in, run the parking lot, are not sure if they're going into the bank, I don't understand that. But anyway, if you need a third sign, at least make it smaller. So that's my...
That's your recommendation, very good. John, do you have anything to add? All right.
Hi, we're John DiGiovanni.
Time out. First, I just have to say it for the record, if anyone wishes to speak in favor, please come to the microphone, give your name and address, and or how you're related to the project, the city clerk will have 10 minutes for this portion. There you go.
Thanks.
Thanks, John.
John DiGiovanni with 5,000 Peachtree, I represent the ownership group. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, this is Brendan Freeman with Apollo Signs.
I think Gary pretty much said it, the bank feels like they need an identification over the door facing the parking lot. Yes, people will be driving on there, presumably know they're at Chase Bank, but it seems like that whole facade is a little barren, and they feel like a door identification over that door is required. It doesn't face any street or roadway, and it's not visible from anywhere other than the parking lot, so it doesn't affect any surrounding properties at all or traffic there are. And we're in agreement with staff's recommendation to limit it to 44 square feet.
All right, thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor? Sure, if you, anyone who speaks in opposition? All right, council, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. I was just going to confirm, is the, the image that we're seeing here in the plan, is that to scale to the recommendation that you have, or what percentage of this is your recommendation?
Okay, if you looked on the view that is labeled, I guess from page 278 of your package, there is the end view of the building, where there's a small sign over, you know, in the middle of the facade. That's the small sign that I'm talking about, in comparison with their sign that they proposed, which is the same size as they have on the front, which is on page 276 of the package, that's the exact size of the sign they want.
Any further questions, thanks.
Cool. Any other further questions? All right, we're going to move on, or as they say, we're moving around along. The next item is number five, variance 5404 Peachtree Road and 3476 Shamley-Dunwoodie Road.
Yes, Mayor, Council, this is a requested variance to allow a townhome development with a number of variances from the City Council's, I'm sorry, UDO. The piece of property is actually only a little more than three quarters, a little less than three quarters of an acre, 0.72 acres, so it doesn't qualify as a planned unit development. But it is on the corner of Shamley-Dunwoodie Road and Peachtree, and American Industrial wraps around it. It's a prominent site in the city, near City Hall. The applicant proposes to develop it with 17 two-story townhome units, we have three story units, including the road, located in two buildings that wrap around the perimeter of the site and have a central courtyard. The eight of the on-street parking places, eight on-street parking places are proposed along the frontage of Peachtree Road. Parking for the townhomes themselves would be located in the ground level or basement level, where the courtyard is, and it would be accessed from the driveway on American Industrial Way. They propose another plaza with sculpture art down on the corner of Peachtree Road and American Industrial Way. Sidewalks are placed against the curb on all furnaces, which is basically what the sidewalks are today. There will be underground stormwater management vaults, and I believe they would also be burying the overhead utilities along the frontage. Staff recommends differently on each of these variances, so I'm going to walk through them. Varyance number one, from Section 230-5D, requires a minimum sidewalk width of eight feet for sidewalks on American Industrial Way and Shamley-Dunwoodie Road, and recommend approval of that with the following conditions. An eight-foot wide sidewalk shall be provided behind the curb with on-street parking along Peachtree Road. Condition two, the applicant should bury the overhead utilities along the frontage of Peachtree Road, and I wasn't sure if they were doing that or not. Varyance two, recommend approval, variance two from Section 230-27C1A, that requires a landscape strip with a minimum of seven feet adjacent to the street curb, subject to the following conditions. Seven-foot wide landscape strip shall be provided behind the sidewalk along Peachtree Road, and the landscape strip shall be provided with street trees and street lights as required by the City of Shamley's Streetscape Design Guidelines. Number two, the applicant shall bury overhead utilities along the front of Peachtree Road. Varyance number three, from Section 230-13, staff recommends approval of this variance that requires that the side setback of the corner lot be 2/3 of the front yard setback for that street, in this case, it would be 10 feet on American Industrial Way, subject to the following condition. The setback on Shamley-Dunwoodie Road shall be 10 feet, measured from the back of the existing retaining wall, but not, not to less than the edge right away of Shamley-Dunwoodie Road as indicated on the current survey. Condition two, the setback on American Industrial Way shall be no less than seven and a half feet. Varyance number four, staff recommends approval of variance number four from Section 230-30D1 that requires the first floor of the building, fronting of storefront street, which would be Peachtree Road and American Industrial, to have a minimum floor-to-seaman height of 18 feet, subject to the following conditions. The minimum floor-to-seaman height for residential units facing Peachtree Road, including Unit 13, shall be 12 feet. Varyance five, staff recommends approval, variance five from Section 240-13A1A that requires each lot in a single-family attached development to have a minimum lot width of 20 feet, subject to the following conditions. One, no more than four lots shall have a minimum width of 18 feet. Two, all lots facing Peachtree Road shall have a minimum width of 20 feet. Varyance six, staff recommends approval of variance six from Section 240-13A1B that requires each lot in a single-family attached development to have a minimum lot area of 1,600 square feet, subject to the following condition. One, the minimum lot size shall be 800 square feet. Varyance seven, staff recommends approval of variance seven from Section 240-13A1D that requires each lot in a single-family attached development to have a minimum of 200 square feet private space. Varyance eight, staff recommends approval of variance eight from Section 240-13A1G that limits the length of the building in a single-family attached development to a maximum of eight detached dwelling units of 200 feet, whichever is less, subject to this following condition. The development plan shall consist of a minimum of two buildings containing single-family attached, two simple townhouses, and the minimum separation between buildings shall be 24 feet. Varyance nine, staff recommends approval of variance nine from Section 240-13A1J that requires townhouse, house buildings to include a continuous five-foot sidewalk connecting front entrances of all the levels. Number 10, staff recommends approval of variance 10 from Section 230-29D that requires buildings with more than four residential units at the street level, shall have front-facing entrances that are directly connected to the public sidewalk with pedestrian walkway that is perpendicular to the street and a maximum of five feet wide, subject to the following condition. One, all townhouse units facing either Peachtree Road or American Industrial Way shall have front-facing entrances that are directly connected to the public sidewalk with a pedestrian walkway that is perpendicular to the street and a maximum of five feet wide. Varyance 11, staff recommends withdrawal without prejudice for variance 11 from Section 230-2A that limits impervious surface to a maximum of 80 percent. This variance was advertised, but is not necessary since we determined along with the applicant, that the purgus paving in the courtyard satisfies this requirement. Varyance 12, staff recommends withdrawal without prejudice of variance 12 from Section 240-13A1N that requires townhouse facades to be separated by at least 40 feet. This variance is not needed because there are no townhouse facades that are actually proposed to face one another as this standard imperves. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Gary. John, do you have anything to add?
I do now.
Very good, then, at this moment, we will ask for those that wish to speak in favor, please come to the microphone, tell us who you are, your name, city clerk, and your address, please.
Yes, my name is Jerry Spangler, I'm the Director of Architecture at TSW. We're a planning, architecture, landscape architecture firm, in the business about 25 years. I live at 987 Mantisus Street, in Georgia. Our, our company, TSW, has good, strong proponents, urbanism, good work, play, community design, it's how that culture that would have addressed this project. I want to be very brief, I'm just going to touch on what you have in project concepts, who perhaps, I'm presuming you're seeing that on your screen.
Yeah, if you would turn that around, because this is a public hearing, it's not for us, it's for the public to see, so if you just put that somewhere where the public can see it, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
Just a couple things I would like to touch on. This is an interesting site, it's a challenging site, it's essentially surrounded, it's an island essentially surrounded by traffic, and, but because of that, it's very prominent. Our goal as designers and architects is to hold the sidewalk wall to do some...
Our goal as designers and architects is to hold the sidewalk wall to do some good urban architecture that addresses the corners of this project in a strong, definitive way, contributing to the overall streetscape that you're trying to do here. We think the project does that. It is seventeen townhomes, as you've already heard, only four of those are the eighteen-foot line, all the others are twenty-three or more. To achieve the stated goal of having good, strong urban architecture that touches sidewalks, the reddish color moles are custom to indeed wrap the side with buildings, not have sort of undecided gaps, if you will, into what is essentially a large parking board. The only other, I think, noteworthy idea here is that it is important, with any townhouse design, but particularly those that are on heavily trafficked roads, to have some kind of what we call a dooryard or four-court. You can see that in our rendering, there's a low wall that one steps into prior to going up the stoop and going to the front door. All of these have that. Thank you. Let me bring the image up. It's the sort of tan colored wall there. We don't see that as a high wall, and I'm sure you have regulations, but taking into the height of that wall, we don't see that be more than perhaps thirty-six inches high. This rendering does illustrate the look of the townhouses. We are going to meet your requirements for brick, so the grayish color of this brick, the other material is going to be cementitious panels, and we do have a lot of glass. We would call this the text of modern, we want to embrace, if you will, the industrial look that you have started here, the warehouse, and the brick, indeed, may very well be more of a traditional brick with a heavier mortar, and a little more towards the traditional side than the brick road side. That pretty much concludes my presentation. I think Taylor Smith is going to address our responses to some of the staff recommendations.
Sure. Thank you. Taylor Smith, Terminus Commercial Real Estate, represent Cavill Development and fifty-two fifty-six Peachtree Road, Shandley, Georgia. So first off, thank you to staff and council for hearing this today, we appreciate your time. We're excited about this project, we think it's going to bring some energy to this corner, which is much needed. As far as the staff recommendations, the only things that we had issues with were the, was the conditions in variance one, two, and three, and they really all pertain to the same thing, which is the sidewalks setbacks and landscape strips that we have to provide. Due to the right-of-way and how it's, we're kind of restricted, if we were to provide the eight-foot sidewalk with seven-foot wide landscape strip, we would lose a good portion of our courtyard, which we think is very, is imperative for new residents, we think that's a good selling point. So what we would propose to do in lieu of giving up that courtyard is to adopt a Renaissance plan, which we talked to staff about, and we talked to members of council about, try to basically extend it to the right-of-way to, as much as possible, as much as you guys are willing to let us, to address those concerns that are outlined in seven and point two and three. So that is, and we would, we would design it, we would build out all of the, do the landscaping sidewalks, we would do the art installation, but, John, I think if you don't mind, if you could show an aerial that, you know, could give us some context. But we would, we would basically increase, you know, take over the sidewalk and the landscape from our side on Peachtree, on Peachtree Road towards basically eat into that triangle, if you will, and give rid of the turn lane on Peachtree Road, if that's what council desires, but that's just, that was our thought. We know that, that the Renaissance plan was, that was one of the designs in the Renaissance plan, we thought it was a good, we thought it was a good one. So after answering any questions you guys had.
Great, thank you. Still got about four minutes left. Anyone else wish to speak in favor?
Neville Owleson, twenty-six, twenty-two, Winding Lane, Brookhaven, Georgia. Good evening, Mayor and Council, good to see everybody again. You guys know, we do a little bit of townhome development around town, so we're familiar with it. What you may not know is our firm is the owner of the property, owned it for about three years. We worked really hard to try to, I personally worked really hard to try to work on a amassing plan, a density plan, very similar to what the formal developer had planned on this site with a mixed-use building, a commercial on the bottom, probably a restaurant, five thousand, ten thousand square feet, with about thirty-two condo units built above it. Unfortunately, the site is so constrained that the cost came back at around five hundred thousand dollars a condo unit, which means if you need to sell them, obviously, it's a significant amount of comping, pretty similar to the rich Carlton residences on Peachtree. Fortunately, you know, I think Shandley will be there one day, I really believe that, but it's not there today. I've got to tell you, as I said, to add a little in townhomes, if it was my presentation, I would just leave up a picture of the elevations. They're amazing. I think Cavill's done a really good job, if you haven't seen their product around town, it's incredibly impressive. They're not a production builder, they're a custom builder, and I'm really excited to have, and be interested in Shandley and this site, fully support the design, the fact that they're working in an open plaza with an art sculpture, things going above and beyond. And I think the council should approve the variance as is requested.
Thank you. Still got about two minutes left. Anybody else wish to speak in favor? Anyone who speaks in opposition?
Mayor, Council, my name is Mario Cambradella, I live at five one one five Peachtree Road. Happy to be here. I'd like to speak in opposition to some of these variances. Live, Work, Play, I see one. I just want to say that right off the bat. Number two, privatization of courtyards as a, as a trade-off for a public tree, the benefit that it provides, not only for the energy efficiency of that building, but for everybody that's going to be walking on Main Street. I'm in opposition to that variance. Pervious pavement, this is variance number nine, pervious payers on the courtyard, is that on a parking deck? Does that constitute, maybe we can switch to the land view? So the, the small checkers are the, are the papers?
The pervious payers.
The pervious payers on the driveway, and, and that's twenty percent of the site? So in opposition of that, that move entirely. Feel a compassion on that, that is a, going to have to handle, that project should have to handle it somehow. This, I believe, I've lived here for eight months. I'm a landscape architect, registered landscape architect, I have a master's in environmental planning from University of Georgia, I have a doctorate in landscape architecture, I have a master's in landscape architecture from University of Georgia. I also work at the City of Atlanta as Mayor of Cassin Reed's, Urban Agriculture Director in the Office of Sustainability. And I'm here as a citizen tonight, because I live in this neighborhood, walk in this neighborhood, enjoy the street, enjoy walking to commerce. And I believe this site is the heart of this city. You have the power to help guide the development to this, not just for this development, not just for this mayor and council, but for generations to come in the heart, in the very fabric of downtown, in the heart of the city. I do hope that you consider the generations that my children will grow up on, living or working along this street when you make the decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. In about seven more minutes, anybody else wish to speak in opposition?
Thank you, Councilman Mayor. My name is Brian McLeod, at fifty-two hundred Peachtree Road, eleven oh four. I'm also a Main Street resident. The townhome looks terrific on paper, certainly probably be prudent over a hole in the ground, but to depart from the stated goal of the city to have ground-level retail in these kind of developments is a significant departure. So that's going to be done, I think there needs to be a maximization of the street activation that is going to happen. One thing, why does there need to be on-street parking, there's not going to be on-street commercial. This will be parking that will be used by the residents of these townhomes almost exclusively, because why else would anyone really park there otherwise? So why give up any sidewalk space for any parking on this street? The other thing would be, as Mario mentioned, I don't see shrinking of courtyard as a major hardship compared to shrinking sidewalk space on the outside. And that's all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate being here. Anyone else? Got a couple minutes left? All right, council, any questions for the applicant and/or the staff?
So I have the same consideration, the same level of concern with regard to the on-street parking versus the giving up the sidewalk as it relates to trying to create something significant along Peachtree Road. When the applicant suggested relief from the eight-foot sidewalk, did they, what is that being reduced down to? Is that being reduced down to a six-foot sidewalk currently?
I believe they're showing five.
Showing five. And the, the seven-foot landscape strip, that's going from seven feet down to what? Is that down to zero?
I, I don't know that there is a landscape strip shown. That's, again, my staff has recommended a wider sidewalk and landscape strip.
And what would staffs recommend, do you know off the top what your recommendation would be to the idea that the on-street parking be removed in favor of having the sidewalk and streetscape, because of, in fact, you know, one of the gentlemen spoke about losing the ground floor retail, which I think is a significant concern, and what we need more with retail, or people to patronize the retail, frankly. If those, if the on-street parking were, were lost, does the facility have the ability to deal with guests that come to visit people in these townhomes?
You'd have to ask the applicant that. In my opinion, the parking that they've shown doesn't work.
Does not, or does?
Does not.
Okay.
And there are several of these units that you can't park, because you can't get in and out of a cramped space. So the on-street parking would either replace those spaces or provide physical parking, which again, someone were to try to park in that little courtyard, I'm just concerned that would block everybody else's town.
So then I'll address a question to the applicant, then. And if you could speak to my pessimism about residents having a satisfactory parking experience with living in these townhomes?
Well, I guess I take exception to the idea that, that these garages don't work. There's, we have two tight locations here for the garages, and we're still in the conceptual design point here. We're going to obviously continue to, to work with that. Number one, the number one garage, right now it's currently about nineteen feet. We have done, TSW has done, we've worked with the developers all over this city and elsewhere in Vicarion, Woodstock, many examples where that back-out area is eighteen feet, nineteen feet, twenty feet. We do believe for number one, we can certainly get it to twenty-three feet or so, but I have developers here who, who want a certain number of units to make this work. But it's, it's, again, I just want to say, it's, it's only two instances where there's a problem. The rest, the other one, excuse me, is number six, and we're at twenty-three and a half feet there already, twenty-four feet is a normal, accepted back-out area. Every parking lot uses that, that's your drive-out. And again, we've done multiple townhouse projects where we have had tighter backing areas. I can take you down to Glenwood Park, one of the most successful urbanist projects, not only in Atlanta, but in the United States, and there's instances there where a continual twenty-four-foot wide lane where on both sides people are parking out. This is, this is part of what urban design is, and for this particular site, with the challenges here of the shape of the side, it's, it's not surprising that we have a couple of instances where it's a little tougher. We're going to try and improve them, we're going to work hard to get those.
My concern really was less the space necessary to move out and parking the people that live there. I'm really much more concerned by the fact that I think that, you know, this doesn't allow for the opportunity for folks to have people drive over and visit them. And I think that, I think that if you don't have a place to store visiting cars on the site, I don't know that it is reasonable for you to expect that the surface rooms would provide relief for that because of the unique nature of where this is located and the hardship of locating and parking nearby.
Well, you're going to have to decide your philosophy about on-street parking. I can only say, most of the communities that we work with, who are trying to get to a more livable, walkable streetscape are all in favor of on-street parking.
Right, not at the detriment of three feet of sidewalk space, I think is what Mr. Hillman is saying. You're going from, and we are feeling, you're going to go, you're going to go from eight feet to five feet, which we are all about promoting a walkable community, so if you want to talk about that, right on, right? But I think what Mr. Hillman is saying is that on-street parking is a wavelength, we're trying to pick up on-street parking everywhere we can. Everybody in this room knows we've got a parking crunch in this city, which is a good problem to have, right? But we're also trying, we're trying to make it very walkable, right? So at the detriment of giving up, and if you're going to require then people that come to visit to find somewhere else to park, you're suggesting that they do it at the walkability of everybody else that lives in the community?
Well, I was addressing the on-street parking. I don't disagree with the idea that we need eight-foot sidewalks, and we're going to try hard to achieve the eight-foot sidewalk side, there's no margin here. And if we need to lose, we do have the landscape strip on the low walls, it's five feet, but we have to lose some of that, we will. I suppose if this comes to show, we have to lose some of our four-court, we will lose that. So I'm all for the eight-foot, I was simply addressing your question about where do people park? And yes, it's reasonable to think that guests will park on the street, it happens all over. So we're in favor of, of eight-foot sidewalk?
Great, any questions?
So my question was, there was discussion, and Taylor mentioned it, about implementing the Renaissance plan on that street, and in turn, and part of that would be closing that, closing that turn lane.
That's correct.
And that, would that not open up the possibility of going back to an eight-foot sidewalk?
Absolutely.
And putting that all in?
Yeah.
Putting it as part of the block, as part of the city coming back in and putting it to later date.
Exactly, and that's what I was trying to loop to earlier. I think there's, there's a solution that both of us can work towards, and we can achieve the eight-foot sidewalk and the seven-foot sidewalk, this is the promenade of Shandley, it should be that. And the applicant is willing to pay his share of that promenade, and not only that, he's willing to increase it and take it down to American Industrial and wrap it around, and achieve what was, you know, apparently what seems like a very good vision that was stated forward in the Renaissance plan. So I think that-
Taylor, I want to help you out with this just real quick.
Yeah, please.
I've looked at this for a long time and actually driven it with a traffic engineer very versed in urban development, and said that this, this intersection here is actually screaming for a traffic circle.
Okay.
So I'd like to see, and, and the Renaissance plan is a wonderful thing, and I'm not going to put it down in any way, but it was, it was done by a grad student that I don't think has any knowledge of traffic engineering whatsoever.
Just quietly.
Right? So, so looking at, making sure that the traffic works properly, and the sidewalk works properly, and your development works properly, I'd like for us to look at something that, that is looked at by a traffic engineer.
I think that's, I think that's a reasonable request.
And so then the request is that, you know, if, if it turns out to be that a traffic circle, from an engineering standpoint, from moving pedestrians and cars through that intersection works much better, is that something that you're willing to work on?
I think so. I think our only concern with that would be just causing any delay on our side, you know, while you guys take time to do that. I think that if it's, we're working expeditiously towards it, absolutely. I think that if it's, we're working expeditiously towards it, absolutely, but we, you know.
Well, so what are we talking about? You said the applicant, which I assume is you.
No, it's not. It's Catholic, I'm representing.
Okay, and it's owned by, so, so they're the applicant and it's owned by him. What is your role then?
I'm the broker in this situation.
You're the broker, okay. Very good. But so- Very quick, Taylor, okay. You had suggested or said that if they were willing to, or is there any conversation about them working with the city to create a, a better use of that intersection?
Absolutely, yes. I'm happy to talk to you. Please, come up. How are you doing, Alan? Catholic Enterprises. These are my partners, Dean and Carla from Australia. We've done several projects here in America together. And we love the site and we've hired some of the top talent to design this project. We absolutely, I actually think that's a great idea, the roundabout. I'm a big fan of those. They just did two of them on Riverside Drive on the bridge and eliminated two traffic lights and totally fixed that whole thing. And I've always been a big fan of those. Eliminates head-on collisions and slows down traffic and all that stuff. So I think that's a great idea. I looked at it today. I think it'll fit without, you know, kind of where the triangle piece is. I think it'll fit fine. I don't think that's going to be a problem. I still think we can even bring out that corner even further where we're proposing to put the art. And also, maybe if there's a way to get some more right-of-way, we could do those back-in spaces and even get more parking along there. And, you know, if you give, you give us the right-of-way, we're happy to, we're happy to participate in the payment of, you know, taking care of all that along P Street and American Industrial.
Are you talking about rear-end angle parking?
Yeah.
Two that have been talked about for 15 years.
I was going to say mark this day.
You don't want to be too long. I don't, I don't vote, no, because I still think it needs to be. I'll go there later. But I just want to make sure it's clear, you said that back-in thing, rear-end angle parking.
Right, where you drive by and then you back in the space. I think you, I think you could probably get another-
I'm pretty familiar with it.
Three or four spots.
What do you think, John?
In there. And maybe even more if you bring that corner on out.
I get it. So the thing is, we're all trying to work towards the same thing. What you have here, and what I heard the gentleman from the architectural firm and apologized, I don't remember your name, saying that, you know, we'll continue to work on this.
Jerry Spangler.
What you need to remember is that this is what the council's looking at right now. It's what the council's going to move on. So when you say, hey, this is conceptual and we're continuing to work on it, I understand conceptual very well. But this is something the council has to take action on and say, this is what the staff has reviewed and this is what the council's going to approve. So at some point, we've got to come to some agreement, either now or at some point in the future, if y'all agree to move forward, on what those terms are. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think, I think, you know, for us, we made this fit with, without getting any further right-of-way, but if we're, if there's an opportunity to gain some right-of-way out of that turn lane, we're, I mean, it makes our development nicer as well. I mean, it's mutually beneficial and we're happy to, sure, kind of fix that old corner.
No, that, that's, that's what we're talking about.
But we're, we're only saying, Beau, we're, we're very open to that. We want to work together with you guys. And we've, you know, we've done this before. They've done it all over the world.
Well, that's what, that's what we're trying to accomplish. All right, other questions from the council?
I have questions. You said you would like to wrap the eight-foot sidewalk around American Industrial and onto Shandly Dunn Woody Road. And let's talk about the Renaissance Plan and how it dealt with Shandly Dunn Woody Road. Now, is that something that you're also willing to do or part of it?
With, with regards to Shandly Dunn?
To Shandly Dunn Woody Road, yes.
The only problem with that is the wall. I don't know what you really do.
Well, I think that the Renaissance Plan shows putting that merge lane that comes around the curb on a diet because it's too long. And so you can bump out into the road and the sidewalk could be much wider.
Sure, I mean, I mean, that makes sense to me, too. I mean, I think that's, that will help beautify the whole city by having, you know, this triangle kind of figured out. And I think, you know, maybe adding some room for some sort of landscaping bays and things as you come up, you know?
It does.
And that, that roundabout would be a real opportunity for some landscaping and art or something of that nature to kind of really tie it up.
Statue of Catholic Memorim on a horse, something like that.
And, and I am correct in looking at the, you know, courtyard and you have underground stormwater detention under your previous papers?
We do. I think so. One of the gentlemen was saying that we aren't going to do this storm sewer. We hopefully may all our stuff.
So my question is kind of, that's the question. A lot of what you're talking about is just hyper-conceptual for, takes, takes a lot of conversation with the city about who does what, when, where, and why. I mean, is that something that you can accomplish if we were to defer this project at 30 days? Would that give you enough time to present plans that they could review, that you could bring back to council next month?
Well, here's, here's the thing. We have a closing date set. And also, we need to know, we need to know we're going to get the 17 units. If we get 17 units, we're willing to work with everybody. But if we can't get the 17 units, we've got to start looking at other parcels in other places because that's what's going to have to make this thing work. And we're not going to keep spending money on more and more plans.
That would go to my next question, then. Look us to the opportunity to put commercial on this property. You know, I like the idea of having some residential. I love the townhomes. Your, your architectural rendering looks awesome. I think it would fit in really well. But, you know, you've got a prominent corner there that, that, again, like I said, you know, we're begging for a traffic, is begging for some type of outdoor dining experience when you've got one just right across the street and southbound. And you've got that outdoor dining experience, you know, you're, you're talking about creating a walkable community where you have, you're activating your street level. We've worked on this for a long time. I think that, I'd like to hear your thoughts on why you can't, because I'm assuming you can't, you have to put on there, you know, add, you know, a small cafe, restaurant, commercial component to the corner there.
Well, in the past, we've, we've looked at those kind of deals. And what we've found is that a lot of those small retails struggle if they're within the-
Have you been over to Vintage Pizza, any particular time for lunch or dinner?
Yes, yes, I love, I take my kids there all the time.
You can't get in. I mean, go over to Southbend, you can't get in. We fail, we do not have a restaurant at, Taylor's opening or we're going to open two restaurants in the neighborhood right now. They don't struggle.
They have a good parking on a triangle.
I get it. Parking's a problem, no doubt about it.
That's why, that's why that house has been there 10 years and will go another 10 years.
I don't know if it's been 10 years, but it's been a while.
Yeah.
And then it may be there, it may be there a while on. I'm just saying that we're talking about trying to create something, as the gentleman said during the public conference.
And I'm not a restaurant guy. I mean, I'm just not. I'm a townhouse guy. I do live work. I mean, that's something to, you know, the, the front rooms, the units are flex space. And we've done a lot of live work where people can have small home offices in there, things of that nature. But I understand what you're, I understand what you're saying, and I think we just have a little difference of vision on what, what, you know, I don't think that financially works. And I think, I think that's what all the other developers have had a challenge with. And for us, to get, to make it work for us, we need to get the 17 units, especially because we know we're going to bear a lot of cost in the underground utilities as well as beautifying the corners and everything else. So, you know, and I don't want to get into an argument, but I think there's plenty of other places that are better suited for, for that type of retail that, you know, further down from southbound, you've got, you know, countless empty retail places there that are ready to go. And, you know, would be a lot cheaper for someone to come in and, you know, retrofit an older storefront rather than try to build a new commercial building, which costs more than, than your stick-framed townhomes. I think that's one of the, one of the challenges that some of those commercial folks face when trying to make it work on, on the site. And we're actually, I mean, we're taking a gamble, too. You know, we're going high-end. We're not, you know, these are not going to be, you know, these are, these are, you know, high-end finishes. We're using a lot of glass. So we're, we're putting a lot of emphasis on quality. And, you know, we're, we're taking a bit of a gamble, too, with our sales prices as well, so. But we, we really, I live in Brookhaven, but I've, I've built my first house ever, I built in Shandly, almost 15 years ago, and-
So you're going downhill is what you're saying?
I guess.
Move down in the world. All right, thank you very much. Any other questions to the council?
Thank you.
All right, thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Taylor, I forget you're a broker. I thought you were a developer.
I'm just, I'm a lonely broker.
Yeah, you, you, yeah, you're all over the place, man. All right, next item on the agenda is, I believe, our number six, stream buffer variance application for 5525 and 5547, P Street Boulevard, Currie Honda.
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, there are two applications consecutively that have to do with the intent of Currie Honda to have an acquire of the property next door, only the main miller plastic building. Their intent is to create another automobile service component to Currie Honda on that property. And linked these two, there's a stream buffer along the property line that separates the two properties. So this is an application from Currie Honda to request stream buffer variance to support this development in order to pipe 300 feet out of, I think it's 438 feet, a stream bed that runs along the property and separates the 5525 property, which is Currie Honda's current property, with 5547, which is where they want to expand to the, to create the automobile service center. So as you know, there are three components of the buffer, the 25-foot state buffer, then an additional 25 feet undisturbed for the city, and an additional 25 feet setback for any further surface structures from the stream. So in order to construct their plan, they're intending to remove all of the current vegetation and the stream in that location. Those buffers already go well into the property on each side. And it was clear that this, the buffer restrictions that the city currently have were not in place back in the late 50s, I think, when this property was first developed. They have gone so far to the Army Corps of Engineers and received the permit, the nationwide permit to pipe the stream. And in return, they're going to have to provide a number of string buffer mitigations credits from the Corps of Engineers. They are seeking approval of Environmental Protection Division on the 25-foot stream buffer that the state requires. To my knowledge, that has not been confirmed, that the EPD has approved it. And certainly, we would recommend that the city council's action would be conditioned upon the approval out of the Environmental Protection Division. At this time, the staff has reviewed the standards in Section 310-19 of the city's stream buffer variance requirements. And the application and documentation supports most of the provisions that are required in the findings of the stream buffer variance. So staff would recommend approval pending the approval of the DNI of the EPD. And the stream buffer variance is conditioned upon evidence, qualifications of a land disturbance permit, if the applicant is satisfactorily compliant with the requirements of the Corps of Engineers associated with the approval of the proposed impacts to the stream. And with three, approval of a stream buffer variance is conditioned upon approval of a plan for redevelopment and related variances for 5525 P Street Boulevard and 5547 P Street Boulevard that is approved by the mayor and council, prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit. And with four, during construction, erosion control measures shall be taken to meet or exceed the requirements of the latest version of Georgia law for erosion and soot control. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. John, I want to ask you a question. I was under the impression, and maybe I just didn't read it correctly, or I just saw that the Corps had approved this, but that there was all the approvals needed from everyone except for the city. Going forward, this, I'm understanding now from Gary, that the, the state has not approved the encroachment into their 25-foot setback. My question is, is it appropriate for this council to even, you know, consider this at this time? Or why would we consider this at this time until we know what the state may? It could be a moot point. What is your take on that?
Well, you're correct. It could be a moot point. The state could come back with other conditions that would have to be met prior to this being part, that could change.
And could it change, then, the decision that the council may or may not make and the conditions they may put on it?
Conceivably, at this point, there's an unknown factor. And our saying is that if you're going to approve it, make it subject to EPD.
So but all, all the council can approve is their, their basic 50-feet encroachment at that point. And it could, may or may not be a moot point, but it may be that if the state has conditions...
That's true.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to make that clear. All right, very good. Well, we'll move forward then. Unless you have anything else to add? We'll move forward then with the Catholic hearing. Anyone wish to speak in favor of this request? Please come up. Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Speaking in opposition?
Nope, speaking in support.
I'm sorry, we'll jump up a little faster.
I'm sorry. Actually, I was just checking with an engineer on the status of that EPD approval, which I'll talk to him. John, if you could activate the PowerPoint, please? In the interest of time, I'll just start talking. I've got this in PowerPoint and that, so you can see the extent of the stream buffer variance, of the stream buffers on the property. Here's the conceptual plan, what the finished site plan would look like. This theory indicated, we have received approval from the Corps of Engineers to pipe the stream. It is highly, highly unlikely that the EPD will deny our stream variance based on the fact that the Army Corps of Engineers has already approved it. We have received comments back from EPD. We have addressed all of those comments. It was advertised, it was a 30-day advertisement period that's required. There were no comments in opposition, so now we're just waiting for EPD to get the paperwork to sign off on it. So if that gives you any comfort, hopefully it does, but we have given no indication from EPD that there are any concerns with granting the variance to the state buffer. Can you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So the, this obviously shows the location of the stream. I just want to point out that there's a convergence of storm pipes right where the blue line intersects with the red line there. We've got several storm pipes coming in, intersecting with the stream. You could go to the next. And you'll see those storm pipes there in the dark black. So much of the stream is already piped, and what is left is really rather trashy and unsightly. You could go to the next slide, please? This one shows the extent of the buffer on the existing building. It's almost about a third of the building. And it encroaches, takes out a good sway of the existing dealership parking lot as well. Next slide. This is the culvert. The stream goes into a pipe and this is where it comes out on P Street Boulevard. I'm sure you're all familiar with this. This is a, I swear that none of us like to look at. And as part of our development, we will be cleaning this up and installing a new streetscape, which I will get to when we get to the rest of the variances. Gary's done a great job summarizing everything, but, so as far as the stream buffer goes, obviously, we think it's a hardship to have to maintain a state, a city buffer for a piped stream or a stream that's no longer going to exist, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you very much, Floyd. Any others wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Any council other questions?
Expect to make way to the stream outlets, again, it outlets into Nancy Creek.
See, I'm, to be honest, not entirely sure where are those pipes in there because they go back into a pipe and then on P Street Boulevard and then kind of disappear, so.
This is part of a system that is Nancy Creek. It's a trajectory to Nancy Creek. It's on the EPD impaired streams, there's 303B.
But we don't know exactly how it potentially is. Did this go under the shopping center parking lot and empty into?
I think it does.
Creek and 1000?
Yeah, I've got a more clear way than that.
So my question is for staff. Does this open stream serve in any way as a storm water relief mechanism for this site?
Yes, it does to a extent. Their plan is to capture the storm water in a detention pond, treat it, and then release the, the treated water into the stream instead of more raw runoff. To a limited extent, there's cleansing action that is proposed as a result of crystal stream process cleaning the water in the detention pond before it goes back into the pipe.
Will that storm water plan that they're, that they've proposed be as, be as complete as if this were being a newly developed site?
With respect to the 5547, yes, sir. But it does not retrofit 5525, which- But it does not retrofit 5525, which was built many years ago without storm water.
And does the storm water strategy take into account the long strip that goes up the back as well?
Yes, that's part of, some of that would remain open. There's 438 feet of open stream now. They would be piping the 300 feet that's closest to the road and the last 138 is way back in the back near where they would have a detention facility.
And is, I'm going to ask the applicant, are, is there an intent, then, to pipe the front as well, right? To cover that in?
Yes, because to connect the two parcels, that area will be piped and then cleaned up the culvert and.
But along the front won't have a ditch any longer, correct?
No, no more ditch.
Correct.
I'm going to get to that when we talk about the streetscape.
Fantastic, thank you. To a great. Thanks for bringing that up, Tom. Gary, so then the existing conditions, the parking lot in the back, the long parking lot and the current site, are there conditions to treat that water as well before it's running into these pipes?
No, but I talked to the city engineer today and he said that might be a good idea for a condition to add further mitigation to the stream buffer variance, that they would create a new detention system for the existing 5525 and then pipe that into this piped stream after having cleansed it.
Because as much as, I mean, it sounds great and I understand being able to make things better than we did 50 years ago and cleaning the water that's coming off the site that's supposed to be rebuilt, however, the, just, and granted that nature can't clean up all the stuff that we throw into it or have for the last 50 years, but I think that it does some sort of a job of cleaning up the stuff that's coming off the lot, that if you just throw it into a pipe coming off that large blacktop area that is their parking lot on both, you know, the long piece in the back and the current site, that where the dealership is, it isn't, the water's not going to get any type of water quality treated to it.
That's likely. You might want to address some of that to their engineer, but my assumption would be there'd be a sheet flow off of the current Honda site going into the open stream and that would not necessarily get treated by them.
Not necessarily, I don't know how it would. I mean, at least now there's nature there at some degree that treats it.
Right.
You know, but at this point, you're going to, you're going to just take all of that oil that's coming out of cars, granted, new cars don't maybe drop oil, but whatever is put on the pavement and it's just going to go straight into a pipe. That doesn't sound like it's making a situation better, it sounds like it's exacerbating it in a negative condition.
That's something that I cannot prove or disprove at this moment, but if you want our city engineers to take a stab at it, we can do that.
Very good. Any other questions?
If I might address that, we're happy to talk to you about water quality measures on the existing site, but you should also know that there are discussions beginning to redevelop that site entirely. So obviously, when it is done, there will be a complete new detention system installed.
My question is also.
I really just want to express my amazement at this, the intermittent stream, that that's even called a stream. That's on the corner of Broad Street and Peachtree Boulevard. What makes that an intermittent stream? Just because it has water in it?
During certain parts of the year, it does flow. There are two, three types of streams, ephemeral, intermittent, and perennial. The ordinance is structured so that intermittent as well as perennial requires the same buffer.
And so where does that go to? Do we know where that one outlets?
Not exactly, no.
Really, the only reason it's got water in it is because it rains and it doesn't hurt?
Well, it's coming from higher up, which is to the, what, back on this side of Peachtree Boulevard raining down. That's not why we have water in America, because it rains.
So since we're talking about storm water, I don't, maybe this will come from another spot, you can tell me, but I know that there's a lot of water that comes, I mean, heavy rains, that come from Shambly Plaza, bypasses there the water retention because it just flows right over the grate and it flows onto Peachtree Boulevard, across Peachtree Boulevard into this ditch. Is your design going to take that into consideration, that you may get some Shambly Plaza water on it in there and have to, you know, hate to wash out your sidewalk and everything from Shambly Plaza?
Yes, that's right. So we will be addressing that storm water as it comes off Peachtree Boulevard and the new streetscape.
Right, but I think John makes a really good point. I hadn't thought about that one, Gary. You know, there is a ton of water that cheats off Shambly Plaza. I mean, we have flooding down there and everything that we do here is to try to, you know, mitigate problems, make it better rather than exacerbating problems we have, right? We promise that to the community and everybody wants to see that happen. There is a ton of water that comes off Shambly Plaza that is not captured by their intention or if there is even any contention over there. And a lot of it runs into that open culvert and at some point, it alleviates the flooding much quicker than if that culvert were just covered up. And believe me, nobody wants to see it covered up as much, I mean, more than I do, I'm sure everybody does as much. But it does, you know, act as a basin that catches some of that water on Peachtree Boulevard as it floods there. Is there a way to address that? Is there a way to calculate it, find out? I mean, the last thing we want to do is exacerbate a problem that's already there.
The answer to your question is yes, there's a way to do it. It's like the traffic circle study. We haven't done that, we can do that eventually.
Okay, thank you.
I'll let the engineer address that because we are addressing it.
Building Systems, Architect, Building, 767 Fisher of Shambly, Georgia. Yeah, we will address that. We're providing an additional decel lane there. We're going to have to work for the DOT and we are going to do some upstream analysis we discussed previously about the water coming off of Shambly Plaza and the issue with that.
So for this particular development that you're looking at doing, you're talking about widening Peachtree Boulevard?
Correct, a lot of decel lane in front of Shambly, in front of Curry Honda.
Doesn't make it very walkable across there to get to Shambly Plaza, adding more pavement there, right?
Well, it stops the cars from piling up going toward Broad. But we're going to add the 10-foot sidewalk to all the streetscape.
I get that, just say we're making it more walkable, but then we're putting more asphalt between both sides of the road.
I don't think it'll, I think it'll crosswalk, it won't be wider.
Yeah, the crosswalk won't be wider. No, we're moving the entrance down away from Broad.
Do we have that on?
Yeah.
I mean, I like to decide, do we have that?
It's on, it's on. And we'll put, and we're going to have to add some underground storage there also.
Yeah, but is there a way for the water to get into that underground?
Absolutely, there'll be single winged double winged catch wagons.
Okay, that's cool. Let's go to the end, thank you.
I was just going to add that I thought I saw that you were actually closing off the driveways onto Broad Street and creating the streetscape all the way along up the side of the dealership. And I just want to say, I think that's going to look beautiful.
And I completely agree with you. Are we going to put people over that? Just kidding.
Any other questions? All right, next item on the agenda then is variance application for 5547 Peachtree Boulevard, Curry Honda.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a continuation of the same idea from the plan standpoint. The proposed development will be to demolish and degrade the site of the Magnolia Plastics for a 30,400-square-foot express service facility. The four components, an office customer area, auto repair shop, 30 service days, service reception area, the four lanes, the vehicle drop-off, and a 1,080-square-foot car wash. The site development plan shows a single entrance drive from Peachtree Boulevard in front of 5527 that is restricted to right-in, right-out turning movements leading to an extensive driveway system and seven parking places internally. Additional parking appears to be located on the adjacent parcel for Curry Honda vehicle sales that has two interconnected driveways. Approximately a third of the existing Curry Honda auto dealership parcel would be demolished, that is the paving, and redeveloped, including demolition of one small building and relocation of the principal driveway to the northeast along Peachtree Boulevard. The entire streetscape along Peachtree Boulevard and Broad Street would be reconstructed to city standards and the existing overhead power lines would remain according to information that I have. So the applicant seeking a number of variances in order to accomplish this plan. Variance number one from Section 230-30B1 requires the first floor of a building running a storefront street to have a minimum floor-to-ceiling height of 18 feet. Staff recommends approval of this variance subject to the following conditions. First, the proposed stream buffer variance is approved by Mayor and Council and currently with approval of this variance. Number two, floor-to-ceiling height of all portions of the building that are not two-stories in height shall be a minimum of 18 feet. This shall include the entire office customer area shown on the architectural plan, C100, received by the Development Department on September 1st, which should be a minimum of 18 feet for the entire width of the front of the building to a minimum depth of 60 feet measured back from the facade of the building that is closest to Peachtree Boulevard. Condition three, a master signage plan should be submitted for approval of the Mayor and Council prior to issuance of a building permit. Variance number two would be from Section 230-28 that prohibits an exterior wall of the building aside from having the appearance of a metal building and requires such walls to be architecturally designed to have the appearance of brick, grass, wood, stuff or stone. Staff recommends approval of this variance subject to the following conditions. Number one, the proposed stream buffer variance is approved currently. Number two, the applicant provides a sample of the metal composite material for review and approval of the city administrator prior to receiving a building permit. Number three, the area of metal composite material that is visible from Peachtree Boulevard, not including any fascias, shall not exceed 1,300 square feet. Four, a master signage plan should be submitted for approval under the Mayor and Council prior to issuance of a building permit. Variance three from Section 320-39A5 requires that a maximum of 80% of the required true density for each site be satisfied with alternative compliance such as payment into the treebank. Staff recommends that this be drawn without prejudice because we've reviewed the revised landscape plan that proposes to meet the standard of 80% to alternative compliance and 20% on the site. Variance four is from Section 250-7B5 that requires interparcial driveway connections for all adjacent properties that have commercial office or multifamily uses. Staff recommends denial of this variance, but if the Mayor and Council determines that this variance should be approved, staff recommends that such approval be subject to the following conditions. Condition one, an interparcial connection consisting of a 24-foot driveway and 5-foot sidewalk shall be constructed to the property lines of the northeast, which is typically out of location to be approved by the city administrator. Variance number five from Section 350-2A1E prohibits driveways located between the sidewalk and the building and requires that such driveway should be perpendicular to the adjacent street. Staff recommends withdrawal without prejudice of this variance with the understanding that an interparcial driveway connection that's parallel to the street with more than 50 feet beyond the building aside should not be considered as violation of this provision. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Gary. John, do you have anything to add? Very good. All those wish to speak in favor, please come up, tell us your name, who you are, in case we haven't seen you before, remind us.
Thank you. Laurel David was Galway Lover. In fact, I think I forgot to use myself last night.
Oh, my gosh. My fault for not catching you on it.
Yeah?
You look kind of familiar.
I think I've seen you once or twice before, too. John, if you would mind putting in. Otherwise, I'll interrupt my flow. And I can go down to the variance next slide. So you'll be happy to know that we worked with Gary. We had submitted a plan originally. If you could go to the next one, the first one, reducing ceiling height of 18 feet. Go to the next slide. This was the plan, I'm sure. We showed this to some of you as well. This is the first plan that we came up with and Gary really held our feet to the fire and basically said it needed to be redesigned. We had some office in the front, but as you can see, the service drive aisles were also in the front of the building and then the two-story portion with the customer amenity area, the offices, storage, restrooms, that sort of thing was in the middle of the building. So we went back to Honda Corporate and, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, and totally turned the building around. So this is a close-up from the conceptual plan. We now have the office and customer area all up front. The service drive aisles, you'll see they'll enter, they'll turn left, go into the building in the, it's called the service reception area, and then all of the actual service bays are in the service shop. The drive aisles have been completely moved down to the middle of the building and won't be visible from the street as well because they'll be tucked into the side there. If you could go to the next one, please. So this is a cross-section taken from the architectural renderings that illustrate that a little bit better. You'll see that we meet the 18-foot height requirement for a depth of 28 feet and then say that's the majority of the customer reception and amenity area and there'll be some offices in that area. The two-story portion will have ceiling heights of either nine or 10 feet and that is 33 feet deep, but you will not be able to see that from the driveway. Now, for this variance in condition number two, staff has recommended that the 18-foot height be for a depth of 60 feet. I think that was taken from the original site plan, which we showed you with all the drive aisles up front. So if you were to consider recommending approval, we would ask that this variance be conditioned on the correct elevation drawings. They were received by the Development Department on August 31st and it's actually sheets A201 and A202. It's a different.
And I've never seen the section.
It's in the bottom of the second page, bottom of A202. I just did a close-up of it so you may be able to see it better. I'll move on, number two, next slide, please. Next variance is to allow metal in front of the building. Next. This is a 3D rendering of what the building as designed will look like. I do want to say a little something about renderings. I got these renderings yesterday. As I said, we had spent a lot of time with the rains, very patient with us as we were turning the whole building around and redesigning everything. So I think really this rendering doesn't do the project justice, but such as it is, that's what we have. So we accept staff's recommendations that, we're happy to show them a sample of what the metal will be. It's the area that's in blue, as you can see on the front. The rest of the building will be in ephors and then there will be, which is actually a soft white, it's a little bit stark right there, and the base of the building will be a soft gray composite gray. If you could go to the next one. This is taken from a different angle and just to go share, have rendering so to project justice. So in this one, it looks like the building is a little slanted and the street's more straight. It's actually the other way around. And the pavement area in front of this building is actually going to be outdoor seating area. So we wanted to activate that area because just inside the building there, that's where the, you know, the coffee and donuts and the other sort of drinks and snacks that the dealership have is all going to be there. So it will have a more feel of a small coffee shop, really, and there really should have been tables and chairs with happy smiling faces there, but like I said, we weren't able to get the renderings done in time. If you could go to the next, please. This will be the, this is the inside of the, as I said, the first 28 feet of the building, which will be, have 18-foot ceiling heights. And you can see mixed room office, customer waiting, amenities, there'll be media room, all for the customers as they're waiting for their cars. And next, this is actually where the cars will drive into, again, very clean, and we'll have the offices right there where you drive in and you work with your service rep to check your car in. Next, please. This is the ditch, I believe we were all talking about. This runs along the front of the building. Of course, to have a beautiful building, you also need landscaping and pretty streetscape as well, so if you could go to the next slide. This is a close-up of the concept plan. You might get a better idea, Mr. Mayor, of where the decel lanes are going to be.
All right, thank you.
We're showing that the. We're showing that the, that whole area is going to be cleaned up. We've got a ten-foot landscape strip, a ten-foot multi-use path, an additional five-foot landscape strip at the back of the curb, which is where the street trees and the street lights will go. And as Steve indicated, this design incorporates measures to address the stormwater coming off Peach Street Boulevard. Next, please. This is a new streetscape that we're putting in on Broad Street, although technically the existing dealership building property, we would not have to do this as we're not tearing down the building and building a new one. But as I said, it was important to Curry Honda to have a streetscape with pretty landscaping all the way around. So here, we've got a seven-foot brass strip with the trees and the lights, and then an eight-foot sidewalk. And we're also adding a considerable amount of landscaping in the existing parking lot at 5547. Currently, there are no trees in that parking lot or landscape aisles. So I think that will have some effect in a way of addressing some of the stormwater that hits the parking lot. All the trees there that you can see in that front section between the existing building and the street, those trees currently do not exist, nor do those landscape aisles. Next, please. We have withdrawn number three, that was to reduce the number of trees on the site, and for number four, for the interparcial driveway. Provided a close-up of a topographical map here. The grade varies between a difference of about eight feet to twenty feet. And it also varies from about twenty-four feet from Peach Street Boulevard going back to the back of the property. So in order to have a flat pad for the building, we'll need to regrade the site. The engineers are going to take the finished floor level at about nine hundred and seventy-six feet above sea level, which means that there will be retaining walls in the north between us and Jiffy Loop of about four feet to address that topographical difference. So the connection to Jiffy Loop is not possible. We could, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. You know, we've got retaining wall and then basing up, basically our curving there. We could put in a mock-up of a connection if you wanted, but it seems a little difficult to do that. We don't, we're not adverse to making some connection, though it's a point in the future. That grade difference, I think, could be surmountable eventually, but at the back, it certainly will not be.
Lauren, you have about one minute.
Thank you. If you could go to the next. You see this retaining wall curves around the back. That retaining wall is about eighteen feet high. It tapers down as it goes towards the stream buffer, and then you can see where the stream buffer is. And that blue area, that's where all the convergence of the storm pipes and the stream all come together. So really making a connection at the back there is not possible. As Gary mentioned, we've also withdrawn number five variance because we no longer have a driveway between the building and the street. So we'd ask for your approval, with the exception of making sure the correct architectural drawings are referenced, that the eighteen-foot height depth should be for twenty-eight feet, not sixty feet, and that variance number four be approved without conditions. Thank you.
Right at ten minutes. So at this point, we can move on to those wishes to speak in opposition. Was there anyone else wishes to speak in favor? Very good. All right, questions from the council?
I have some questions about the Broad Street landscape. So pretty much you're going to, they're going to take out all the landscaping that was put in when that was, when it was built.
Right, we're putting in all-new landscaping.
And what about that, the fence, the wooden fence?
The wooden fence.
We can rebuild it.
We can rebuild that fence.
Can we make it look...
Make it pretty, absolutely.
While we're still on Broad Street, your slide number nineteen, page nineteen, I believe it was, it shows, to my eye, it looks like curb cuts. I don't know what those heavy dashes are. Are those curb cuts? Because I thought you said, Mr. Herman, I thought you said they, there were no curb cuts, curb cuts.
Yeah, the curb cuts are saying, I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear.
Okay, I thought they were, I thought you were closing those off.
Not on, yeah, not on Broad, on Broad Street. We're closing off the current entrance on Peach Street Boulevard that is closest to Broad Street because cars are stacking up there, can't make a right turn into the property because the lines for the services, actually, they're backing up onto Peach Street Boulevard in busier times. So removing that down, putting in the D cell lane, and then obviously with that area with four lanes of service drive aisles, that's going to provide appropriate stacking on the site.
So then I'll continue on your, in the agenda packet, page 456, and 464, one's labeled as Sora Legend. They show a different building design than on page 513. Which slide is that, where was that, 513? That looks like the one that's on 514. Okay.
Yeah, I think the, sorry if you don't mind my speaking out, but I think the site plans that were attached to the stream of variance were actually the whole ones, yeah. But the correct site plans were attached to the variance package request.
I just want to make sure Gary is aware of that and we don't have any confusion on that.
No, I'm not confused at all, but because they submitted that package as one, in order for you to see it, I had to give you the whole thing, but it's not a problem.
It just seems like one of those times things we get tripped up on sometimes because two different pages say two different things.
No, I told him that was just not acceptable.
Yeah, I have a question. It may go to that, Gary, because I don't understand, but all of what work they're proposing here is not all contained on this particular parcel of property. Do you understand?
They're going to re-landscape and strike the parking lot of the existing Curry Honda along the frontage there as shown in front of you. That's on 525, 5525. Okay. And so most of the parking for this new facility, I would add, is on that 525 side of the property.
So is that taken into consideration in your review of this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then also, it was stated that there would be trees put in the parking lot, it looks like there were some parking modifications. Does that affect anything else or trigger anything else on that particular piece of property?
Not to my knowledge. It appeared they were trying to make, reduce of that property and mean our ordinance as they modified their parking model. Currently, there are not trees and so...
Yeah, I'm just not used to seeing an application for one particular piece of property when work being done on an adjacent piece of property.
Well, the variance needs to be done on 5547. The property that they developed on 5525, I'm expecting them to follow the ordinance.
And will that need to come back before the council?
It shouldn't if they followed the ordinance in developing 5525.
That answered my question. That answered the...
That's certainly my understanding, and I hope that's their intent.
Yes, yes, okay. That helped me understand it.
I believe there was mention with me that we couldn't ask for a string buffer variance they didn't control, that they asked them if they didn't control both sides of the stream. So I think that may have something to do with it, too. Is that correct?
Yes, and so the string buffer, obviously, was on both properties. And this variance for the modification of the building, those issues like the eighteen-foot storefront and such, interparcial connections, that all has to be 5547.
All right.
Do you have any questions? Yeah. On the D cell lanes, are the full belts actually raised curb, or is that just painted pavement?
We're still working with DOT. They've done some preliminary review, so they're, it's kind of their court, so we're waiting to hear back from them. It'll be either one or the other.
Okay. So what we, would it be appropriate if we wanted those to be raised curves, would we do that with the condition that DOT approves it? Would that be satisfactory to you?
Yes, sir. Anything that happens there will ultimately be set up by DOT.
To avoid the idea that DOT says that they can do it, but they just choose not to.
We can try to negotiate for the city that DOT accept the raised curves.
No, we have no problem with that.
Yeah, okay. The wall in the back is eighteen feet tall. Did you all talk about a way to terrace that so that it can be planted and actually made to look better than a tall, flat wall?
It'll be an architectural wall. Based on the property constraints, it'd be a little difficult to terraced it. Now, the majority of it will be not visible because of the building.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying, even those places that are not visible, I think a lot of the people that are, you know, coming to this location for their service are, you know, wanting to see things that are more sophisticated in terms of like how the, how the property's used like that, and I...
I may interject, we've had a standard eight-foot maximum retaining wall height, and I have nothing that tells me on these drawings, I could not see there was a huge retaining wall there.
Okay. So maybe that's the answer, then. Okay, so there's been no, there's been a variance request for, to seek forgiveness for that, so we would need to see drawings that did have eight feet and then, what's the, what's the setback? When you go up eight feet, how far back do you go back before you can go up some more? Is it one feet or two feet?
There isn't a rule about that. There are structural requirements, you know, but...
Good practice would be two to four feet.
Be two to four feet, so that you could...
So we can terrace, if we have an eight-foot limitation, we can go eight foot and terrace.
Right, okay, that's good. You know, it really was, I know that there's functionality to that one drive that's closest to Peach Street Boulevard on Broad. Gosh, I wish that sucker could be closed, you know? I just want to look at that out there, and I don't want to make a recommendation that is going to provide a hardship for the actual business in some regards, but, you know, in the event that you all are taking a look at different design choices, and if that curb cut that's close to Peach Street Boulevard could be closed, I can tell you right now that'd be fantastic.
We'll be talking about the delivery pattern. We'll look at that as we move forward.
We're looking at options, yeah. That's currently new vehicle delivery, where you leave with your car or something. We can look at those.
That's where you pull out.
We can look at those.
Other questions?
I, let me go back to the retaining wall. So I'm trying to visualize this. So this parking lot that is behind the new building that you're going to build, that retaining wall is level with the parking lot, and then it goes damp as opposed to going with front?
It's holding, the property behind our property is much higher.
Okay, all right. Because I went back there, and it's like a big...
Yeah, we're currently at slope zone. We're cutting the property down about twelve feet back lower to make it one level. And they know you're plasphemous steps about three times.
Other questions?
Yeah, I wanted to pass some more questions I couldn't remember about. The exterior of the building, that was on one of the slides during the presentation. Go ahead, keep going. Not that much exterior. Either one of those would be fine. Just not a huge fan of these exterior finish. I looked online, there's other Honda dealerships in other areas that have other made of brick, a little less toned-down blue, and I didn't, did you discuss any of those options? Did you think about any of those, or is any of those options available? Because I certainly would like to look at them if they are.
We can cut down on the blue. There's a masonry base, that dark base, and we could entertain some variation, but of course, it's got to go through audit forward. But the blue could, the blue could definitely go away.
Except for the canopy.
Except for the canopy.
What is the canopy? That blue shade?
Just a little, just a thin line in.
Gotcha.
The big little rectangle.
Like I said, I've seen ones that are made of brick and, you know, looked at ones at different locations. I just, is this the best you got?
I would say it's the best we've got. We also want to look homogeneous with the existing dealership because it's, you know, it's the same material.
Well, you've got a remodel that...
I also heard, yeah, that you're going to do something...
So you can make that look like the new building as opposed to making the new building look like the old building.
At some point, of course.
So that would be something I would want to look at for sure.
I would add that, I think the images that jumped down online are some really attractive Honda dealership buildings. And I would think that if there are alternatives, it'd be nice if you could make those available prior to Tuesday's meeting so that we could see them, contemplate them, understand materials, so that when we actually vote on Tuesday, that we could actually contemplate, you know, approving those suggestions that you might have that might be, you know, better looking or whatever.
Anyone else? Very good. Seems to me that will conclude our public hearing. You know, only an hour, two hours, fourteen minutes into the meeting.
Motion to exit public hearing. Motion to...
Second. The motion second exit public hearing, all in favor, that passed unanimously. All right. I got a gavel. I'm going to wake up Brian. Announcements, presentations, because we didn't have enough on the agenda, we're going to hear about the 2015 audit results. You look familiar, too.
Remark?
Oh, not right now, sir, sorry.
I just wanted to draw from John Scham.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. Welcome, John.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Yes, sir.
All right. Good evening.
All right, good evening. The premise of the debate is very brief. Yeah, my name is Doug Moses with Morgan Jenkins, here to present the audit results for the city, December 31st, 2015, caper audit results. I'm just going to kind of talk from the PowerPoint presentation, kind of touch on some of the highlights real quick. And if you have any questions, just feel free to stop and address those at that moment. Go to page two. Next slide. Just information about our governmental practice continues to be one of the largest niches in the firm, representing about twenty-five percent of the firm's practice. We audit about three hundred local governments, state governments as well, which includes about seventy-five cities. Of those three hundred clients, we have eighty-eight that received the GFPA award in estimates of financial reporting, which also includes you all. Next slide. As far as the engagement team, again, I'm the partner responsible for the overall audit. I always like to have a different set of eyes looking at things, so I had another partner, Matt Hill, out of our Chattanooga office, to do the quality assurance review this year. And Josh Carroll, who's here with me today, was the manager that was responsible for the field work. Also below, just some other industries and services provided by Morgan Jenkins. Next slide. As far as our financial statements, our responsibility of the mayor, council, and management, our responsibility as your external auditor, is to give an opinion on those financial statements. And we issued an unmodified opinion, which is a plain opinion, which is what you would hope to hear from the external audit. The audit report date was as of August 24th, 2016. Of course, that's late. We were late in submitting the audit financial statements due to us having to wait on DDA's financial statements. Those were included in your capital this year, caused the material due to using and having debt in a situation of about $1.5 billion, which made it be material to kind of look at the city as a whole. So it's reported in your financial statements as a discreetly presented component. And those statements were audited by other auditors. We rely on your audit reports, or our opinion does not conclude those financial statements. Also, there was no single audit confirmed this year. The city not spending at least $750,000 of federal awards, so we didn't formally see an audit. And again, this will be your third year in submitting the caper to GFPA, which will give that award. So again, hats off to management for putting together a nice set of financial statements.
F for finance.
Yes.
Or A, I guess, in this case.
Next slide here. This main thing here I want to talk about is as far as significant accounting policies. The city did implement GASB 6871, dealing with accounting and reporting pension plans, and we'll talk a little more about that a little later. Onto the next slide. We did receive, as far as our relationship with management, we received full cooperation from managing staff and others. There were no disagreements with management on accounting issues or financial reporting Going to the next, next slide. We're going to the financial trends, looking at your government-wide net position for the last nine, nine years, looking at governmental activities and your business-type activities. You see, you see this coming along the way since the recession. Your governmental activities net position went from thirteen million in 2007 to 21.9 million in 2015. in 2015. The 2014 amount was restated, like, due to the implementation of GASB 68, where we had to recognize the net pension liability. So you see that it was $19.1 million in 2014. If you take out the, if you don't include the restatement, you still had an increase in your net position from $21.7 million in 2014 to $21.9 million in 2015. So, the implementation of GASB 68 did not have a huge impact on the city when you compared it to other governments. Your business-type activities net position went from $287,000 in 2007 to $6.5 million in 2015. So, great improvement there. Next slide. Next slide, let's set your fund balance for your general fund and other governmental funds for the last nine years. You can see from 2014 and 2015, your general fund went from $10.2 million to $8.6 million. It's a little misleading. This year, we moved, the city moved out the host activity from the general fund to a separate fund, and that was about $3.1 million. So if you take that out of the 2014 column, your general fund went from $7.1 million to $8.6 million. So again, your financial condition improved in your general fund when you're looking at your fund balance. When you look at the other governmental funds, it went from $660,000 in 2014 to $3.1 million, I mean, $4.8 million in 2015, but $3.9 million was pertaining to the host fund. That was now, that's now showing several. Next slide. Looking at your fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures for the last nine years, looking at the general fund and then all of your governmental funds combined, which is your general fund, your special revenue funds, and capital projects funds. A good little thumb is, I like to see, or would like to see, two to three months' worth of fund balance, or expenditures in your fund balance are anywhere from 16% to 25%. You all way above that, which is great. Your general fund was right at 61% or seven months' reserve in 2015, and then combined all of your governmental funds is about 83% or 10 months' reserve, which is great. Again, your financial condition has improved. All of your funds had an increase in fund balance or net position, except for the criminal history fund, which had a decrease in fund balance of about $21,000, very material. A lot of people think fund balance equals cash. That's not the case for a lot of governments. For you all, it's pretty close. At year-end, your cash in the general fund was about $8.2 million, and your fund balance reserve was $8.6 million. So that's really good. On to next slide. As far as findings and management points, same findings as last year, interrogation of duties due to a small number of accounting and finance staff we have. We still continue to report that interrogation of duties finding. Next slide. As far as management points, same management points as last year, actually. So there were no new findings, new management points. Management did a great job. These management points here is pertaining to the lack of an accounting and policy procedures to manage, that's covered certain areas. So again, no new findings, new management points this year. So, great job to the finance director and management. Next slide. Like I said, GASB 6871, dealing with accounting and reporting pension plans was implemented this year. We had to restate your beginning net position for your governmental activities by roughly $2.6 million to report the beginning net pension liability on your books. Again, it's that unfunded pension liability that governments are now required to record in their financial statements. Your plan is, your pension plan is looking pretty good. When you look at your funding ratio or your plan, pension plan's net position as a percentage of total pension liability, that rate is 89.27%, so that's really good. Next slide shows the effect of implementing this standard on your proprietary funds. Your beginning net position decreased by $223,000 to recognize the net pension liability on your books. So again, not significant compared to other governments who've seen a decrease, a huge decrease in their net position, and also, a lot of governments are showing a deficit in unrestricted net position. You all have positive categories of premium net position, and your net position has increased for business-type activities as well as governmental activities. So again, not a major impact on your bottom line. Next slide. New GASB announcements in future years. You've got OPAL that's coming out, GASB 7475, accounting and reporting of other post-informed benefits similar to GASB 67, 68, and 71 pensions. You all are going to have other post-informed benefit plans for employees, so no impact for the city itself. Next slide. GASB 77 tax abatements disclosures. This is going to be applicable for you all 2016. This will be here, it's going to require governments for the first time to disclose in their footnotes these tax abatements. You have to disclose the description of those tax abatements, the dollar amount of those tax abatements, you know, the commitments that the government may have other than the tax abatements itself, what the tax abatement recipient is committing to do as far as bringing in jobs, things of that nature to the area. So all of that has to be now disclosed in your footnotes. So, for a lot of governments, that may be viewed as kind of a negative disclosure, especially when you see a huge dollar amounts of ongoing taxes that a government may enter into. So, again, a lot of people think it's kind of politically trivial, but again, that's coming out, and again, that will be reflected in your capital for 2016. Again, that's tax abatements that you all made, and again, other governments that may enter into those tax abatements that affect your revenue stream, that has to be disclosed in your footnotes as well. That's it as far as the new GASB announcements I wanted to kind of cover today. The last slide, pre-quarterly continuing education classes we still offer to our clients every quarter, you earn about 28 CD credits, and we'd like to thank the city for participating in those classes. The finance director and others have attended those classes. So again, if you ever want to attend any of these classes, just feel free to let me know, and we'll be ready for you. But that's the end of my presentation, and I'll address any questions. That's okay. Great.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here tonight. If you have any questions, I'm sure we can funnel through to the city administrator, I'll give them to you.
Fine, thank you.
It's all good news. Thank you, hi. And before we move forward, I must ask that everybody, please calm down a little bit. It's getting a little crazy in here. Everybody's eyes glossed over. Those of you that are left, we appreciate you being here.
B for accounting. A for accounting. No, it's F for finance, but it was an A tonight. All right. Staff action items, we have city clerk approval of minutes. A, city council public hearing, work session, August 11th. Nothing? Okay, anybody? Anybody? All right. Then B, city council regular meeting, August 16th. I think we've got something here.
I have a change to provide, a clarification to make, actually.
Want to suggest?
In, for the 5553 Peachtree Road at all variance requests, I mistake, it was my intention to strike the previous pavement requirement from both variance three and variance four, and I think that I only stated it for variance four, but it was my intention to exclude it from variance three as well.
Any discussion on that? Is there any concern? Not likely suggesting?
Will you email us with what you means, that we can take a look and make sure that your recollection is our recollection for how we voted for Tuesday?
Well, I only stated four.
I know, I'm just saying, just...
And, I mean, I can email it too if you want to. I did write it down for once, and I can certainly do that.
I don't think we have an issue, I just want to make sure that I just answered.
But I can tell you right now, the approval for variance number three, that required a maximum of 80% of the site, the appervious subject to following condition, I wanted to strike that condition, the applicant shall use previous pavement for 50% of the new parking places. And then the second one, which I did state and we did vote on, the applicant shall use previous pavement for 50% of the new parking places. And I want to vote that it's struck.
Any other discussion? All right, was there anything else on the minutes? Very good. Next item, moving on to the city manager, Chambley-Dunwoodie Road streetscapes. Trying to get ahead. Yes, they're going in, right? Woo! All right.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a low bid and responsive bid for Multiplex LLC to conduct the, or to build the streetscape for Chambley-Dunwoodie Road. So at this time, we're asking that the council award and that the authorized the mayor's assignment contract, construction of the Chambley-Dunwoodie streetscape.
And they'll be done by next week, right?
Timeline to start would be somewhere in the middle.
I'd say we'll have to wait, you know, five, six years. No big deal. All right. Thank you very much.
Is there rendering of that anywhere?
Your what?
Rendering?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any packers at some recent, you can send it to me tomorrow or something?
Okay.
I do have a large format at the office, or I can send you the small scale version.
Which you could take to Kinko's and get printed very large.
I would have to receive that, too. You know, we had approved like a fence long from high school or something like that. Seeing rendering and seeing kind of what we're talking about would be really helpful, yeah.
This is a, an item that came from council, and Council of Mesa brought this to my attention last month, but the, this is a holdover from previous month. The, what I have done is surveyed other surrounding jurisdictions as requested, and found that to start a petition or to start this process is typically done, a 20% to DeKalb County requiring signatures on a petition. Roswell and Sandy Springs did not have this requirement, Dunwoodie, Brookhaven, and DeKalb all require 20% signatures. To adopt or to actually implement the study, or a traffic study, required a 65% signatures, signatures from 65% homeowners, in DeKalb, Dunwoodie, Roswell, and Brookhaven, and 75% in Sandy Springs. The citizen financial responsibility for such a traffic calming program, in DeKalb, and Dunwoodie, and Brookhaven, a $25 a year assessment is put on to the property owner or the properties, taxes through a special tax district. In Roswell and Sandy Springs, they typically require HOA's, homeowners associations to pay half of the, half of the price upfront for these improvements. And I did not find any instances where applicants were required to pay for traffic.
Very good discussion.
Who determines what the area is that 20% has to be achieved of?
So we would have a meeting, and once the individual wanted to make application, we would have a meeting, and city staff would look at all of the roads that would be impacted by any traffic calming devices. So it would not just be the road that was necessarily the applicant was asking for, but it would also be all of the roads that fed into or were impacted by any traffic calming.
But does the ordinance allow for you or your designate to be that authority?
It's the city staff, the public works director, and city staff to do that.
So residents lived more off the road that was requesting the traffic, but they had an alternative way of getting out of their subdivision, but versus another sub-road that maybe they had to drive on those roads?
Right, right.
So I would see that as more impacted than the other. Does that look at differently, or is it just like anybody that could drive? Because if you're looking at anybody who could drive on that road, that starts making the map really much bigger, the big signatures you have to get. And then also, if you're allowed to participate in the petition, does that also mean you're now possibly on the list of being charged that $25 a year because it seems like you have others? So, for that, I'll shut up now.
Well, no. Yes, if you're in the district that's designed on, then yes, you would be part of any special tax district that would come out of this process. The purpose of having the initial meeting with the applicants is to sit down and understand the roads that are being impacted and have the city engineer review the impacts. City engineer, public works director, police chief, myself, and planning director would sit through and look at the streets being impacted, what the traffic would do in the instance of traffic calming, and what the impacts could be. We would, we would be looking at the level of traffic that would be impacted. So you're absolutely right, if you have an alternative route that you can go, then you wouldn't necessarily be included in this district. But if implementing traffic calming is going to push traffic onto your street, then we would want to include that secondary street or the street that's being impacted.
And then we go after that, after the initial meeting that they brought, get the required signatures, then you would do your study, and then I assume there would be a meeting with the affected residents to tell them, this is what we came up with. And then there would be a second round of signatures that they would have to go get, basically with the facts, this is what we're going to do, and...
That is correct.
I don't, the 75% of households requirement is, that's high, in my opinion, but to me, also...
65.
I would rather see 65. It says 75.
Oh, it doesn't, sorry.
Yeah. But I don't even, I don't understand either how, the next requirement or summary, nothing includes the mayor, council, considering the request absent the required signature. So doesn't that negate the percentage?
That simply says staff would not bring to council's attention any requests. We would not bring to the council any requests that did not gain 65% or 75%. However, if council wanted to act on a petition that was brought to them, this doesn't necessarily negate that.
Okay, I see. Well, I do think 75% is too high. I would rather see it be 65.
I think that Dunwoodie and Brookhaven have 20% only because they carried over to DeKalb's 20%. Did you see anywhere where that was a high number, low number?
The 20% in Brookhaven, Dunwoodie, and DeKalb relates to the initial traffic study to start in order for the city to actually go out and spend funds on a traffic study. We would want to see the 20% of the people impacted and resolved are interested and want to see this move forward. The 65% is then required to, or the 75%.
Do you think the 20% is a high enough number to prevent possibly frivolous studies?
I think I originally had it higher, but...
Because I'd be interested in being a little higher than 20% in the study area. I was thinking of a minimum of 25, but I would actually be in favor of being higher, like maybe even 35, 40. 40 might be too high, but I'm just...
I would like to see it an extra two or three.
So I, we want to move forward with this. At this point in time, the ordinance as raised is actually 20% for the initial petition, and it is then 75%, I believe, for the, yes, 75% for the implementation petition.
So I'm more of a 30, 65 guy.
Anything else?
I did a little research.
Vannett Road right-of-way.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. The school board, or the school system came to us about the bridge that currently goes between the high school, Chambley High School and Chambley Middle School off of Vanette Road. This is, this is currently considered a right-of-way on the tax map, and the bridge is in some disrepair. So what we're seeking, or what I'm asking is if the council would consider, the school board has asked for that right-of-way to be granted to the school, and they would then make repairs necessary on that.
Can we sell it to them?
We can sell it for a fair market value. Because, you know, they were so easy to deal with in the construction of the two schools that we had in pursuit.
Is there a standard that they're going to be held to for that, for the maintenance of it all that?
For the maintenance?
Well, for people, sidewalk work.
It would be, it would be held to sidewalk standards. Right now, the bridge area is in considerable disrepair.
True.
Now, there's also a considerable amount of the right-of-way that covers a, the two neighboring houses, so we would look at those housing options, the houses as well, and see which of these, of this right-of-way, we want to provide to the school, or do we want to provide any of it to the, to the houses next door?
Do we want to give them access to the property, better access to the property back?
And if you look at the, the area though, you'll see...
So the benefit we get is that the right-of-way gets approved at the cost of the school system. And possibly the negative would be that we would lose control of being able to improve it should the school system put in a state of disrepair in the future.
And did you mention access, or did I miss that part?
Currently, yes.
Sorry. The city uses that like for overflow parking for the Ford, and we could, and we could work that into an agreement with the school system that, that would be a negative as well, other than...
Sounds good.
They need to buy all those houses at one point and combine the two campuses. I suggested that to them, but they weren't going to. Short sighted. Next item, city hall staff reorganization. So the question...
I already got the runaround. Before we, before we move on from Fanny Road...
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just trying to, you know, move us along.
Is this something that the council is interested in?
Is this something the council's interested in doing? Yes, I see a lot, I see a lot of bobby heads up here.
We'll move forward.
A lot of that of council members.
It'll come back to council for action at a later date.
I'm sure China, I'm sure Brian has somebody in China that could make a bobby head. Should they have bobby heads in council?
Speaking of city hall staff reorganization. We have, we have a requested action here to approve the creation of the human resource manager position and an account of one position, and amend the position descriptions of administrative assistant and city clerk. Basically, we have a vacant position at city hall, but it's an administrative assistant position. What we're seeking to do is convert that to a human resource manager, which will be at a higher grade as described in the staff report. The assistant city clerk position would be vacated, and that individual would be moving into the account of one position. And this also includes a budget amendment transferring roughly $20,000, well, $20,000 for salary benefits from the clerk's office to the finance department for that change.
Sorry. Any discussion on this item? All right, next one, IT services.
Yes, thank you. We have a staff recommendation to enter into an agreement with InterDev for IT services, and that would also terminate the current agreement with VC3. At this time, staff, the city has been looking at its IT needs, and due to recent retirements and pending retirements, in the next year, we need to have some stability in our IT This agreement with InterDev would actually provide an onsite staff. He would, he or she would be here full work week. The proposal actually also allows us to move up to two positions if needed at a future date, but this person would take responsibility for our software management and our hosted environments, our servers, and so on, and of course have the support of InterDev back office. InterDev currently provides the service to, on multiple jurisdictions in Central Atlanta, so they do have multiple staff in the area.
That's crazy talk. Actually, somebody that's dedicated to IT.
Something like that was on the agenda for, but...
Oh, I brought it up like 15 years ago, 14 years ago, and you brought it up like four years ago. I think it'd be a great idea to have, what's that?
You have to call it by the correct name if you want to get it done.
Oh, I just said somebody that knows how to work with that fancy stuff. That wasn't it? All right.
I think we should break down into separate discussion groups.
I think so, we should. Let's, if Darren were here, we could all get out in circle and just think about... All right, underground utility requirement.
Council needs to operate the equipment.
I would like the IT person to, I will organize and such that the IT person will be responsible for...
That'd be great.
That'd be great, if they could tear down this building and, you know, we had another facility needed, that would be better.
My last request to, last action item is a request to adopt an ordinance amendment to the unified development ordinance to allow the city manager to approve payments into a utility conversion fund in lieu of burying power lines. The cost to bury power lines has risen over the years, and we are at a point where many of the applicants who have come before you have agreed to bury those power lines and then received a sticker shock, so to speak, at the, at the actual number that comes out. We're hearing costs in the range of three and a half, 2.8 to three and a half to $4.5 million per mile to bury those lines. I did a little bit of research on this and found an Edison Institute study that costs were currently, and this was national, so it was not regional specific, the cost of buried lines are between $1 and $5 million a mile, and it has to do with the types of lines, the types of equipment being buried, as well as the soil conditions. So the recommendation here is to allow developers to come in and request remedy from potentially high costs of, for burial lines. That would be excessive cost to bury lines. The alternative to this would be that council requires developers to have a potential cost estimate from Georgia Power as they, before they come to council for any kind of variance or review. The problem with that is that Georgia Power does not give more than a 60-day, I believe it's 60, might be 90-day, cost estimate, and after that, it gets harder.
Thanks, John. I'll add, I had, I had met with John and one of our property owner business owners in the area that's faced this, the council had approved, and they had agreed to a, you know, burial request, not buried, buried power lines, but they had to pay in lieu of, and when they got to it, it all has to do, as John said, with the area you're in, the shorter the distance, the more expensive it gets. You know, we talked about the idea that they could pay in, but there was nothing quantifiable on it. Looking at it, I would agree with the 1.5 million per mile, and that that's something that like we look at with the tree bank, can be used elsewhere, or even parlayed into the grant money, or we've talked about forming a CID, and that could be something we could partner with the CID on and putting money into it. So I think having a quantifiable amount and letting the city manager have the authority to agree to that amount once the council approves the variance request, to me is the cleanest way to go about it. It's a good idea. And no more sticker shock. It was very, very funny to hear a car dealer say sticker shock. Try laughing down loud. Might roll on the floor too. All right, so that was your last request? You're not going to come to us with any more requests?
This month.
For the moment. Under development department, it looks to me as one through six were public hearing items that should move. I don't believe that we had any that are not moving forward. Number seven, then, part one townhouse development requiring commercial space. I think this was funded from last month, you know, because we figured we'd need to do more with this one.
Yes, Mayor, council. So I'm not going to try to go into great depth with this, but as you requested, we took a look at alternative methods of providing incentives, as well as reviewing in the UDO for you the corner commercial option and the live-work option, ways to bring townhome development and commercial together. Evaluated incentives, including expedited permitting, reducing the fees, reducing the building design standards, reducing open space requirements, increasing maximum permitted density, and offering financial incentives such as tax abatements or financial grants for religious government loans. I also interviewed a number of developers of townhome developments and learned from that that there is this trend, as you saw tonight, where the townhome developers don't know how to do other things, to be honest, and don't want to get into that market. So it would require some kind of tandem connection for us, an exceptional developer who knew how to cross all of those markets. I remember the one that we had, that, that perimeter park, is now going under development, where we had over 150 units, and they said they could do two and a half acres of commercial, which would probably be 25,000 square feet, say, of commercial space. And they, even they parcel that out to somebody else who is going to have to build it at a later date. So we're not, our first experiment in this area hasn't necessarily gone as smoothly as we'd like. So there's an issue of trying to find the right developer. One, so what I put together for your consideration, of course, anything is possible that you may want to consider, but one option is to take the proposed text amendment that had been altered, which had a kind of a fixed ratio of commercial per townhome development. Second is to leave everything go and not do anything different. Third is to, might be to kind of move the townhouses to the commercial, that is to provide, create a townhome location requirement that says that townhome development has to be viewed located within 1,500 feet of existing commercial retailing services connected with convenient sidewalks, or else include at least 5,000 square feet of new retail commercial space within the townhouse plan that's consistent with the standards of the corner commercial or live-work that has design standards. And finally, an incentive idea, we have townhomes allowing NR3, but the NR3 limits the height of these townhomes. So one option would be to say if you developed an NR3 with townhomes that included commercial space or live-work units, with at least 5,000 square feet of pre-standarded commercial space, then we grant you an increase in the maximum building height to, from 38 feet, which is currently the maximum in NR3, to 48 feet, and waive the requirement that the minimum lot size be 1,600 square feet, that would allow them to get more density, and waive the requirement that each unit have a minimum of 200 square feet of private yard space, that also might allow them to grow more density. So this would be an idea that NR3 could provide some incentives for any commercial to a townhome development. Those are the options that I've put together for your consideration or for the direction.
A couple things, you know, you've given out a lot of thought, and I appreciate that. First of all, I just, I said this to him, I don't, I don't accept the argument that because a developer says they don't do it, that we shouldn't require it. We wouldn't have vertical mixed use if we had, I heard from developers for years that, well, I don't know retail, I know apartments, and what happens is, you know, you pad it off, and, and one portion of it and every is built, and we require vertical mixed use. Secondly, I'll go to the, the development you're talking about, you're close to Savoy, I'm trying to think of the name of the street right now, but I would call it an experiment that you did. I would say that it was very well thought out, and I've actually talked with a particular developer on there, and I know there's a couple others looking at it, but looking at about a 20,000 to 25,000 square foot natural grocer on that site and some type of a casual dining, family casual dining on that site, and had, had it all been built out residential, you wouldn't even have that option. And I think those folks that live in that neighborhood, that buy in that neighborhood are going to be very appreciative, as well, other people that can walk to there or even drive there to a natural grocer in that area, not that it's a food island, but, but I've heard from several folks that they'd like to see a natural grocer.
That's incredible.
The, the first one he threw out, I don't think anybody would recognize as somebody that is, you know, all that great at the grocery store, and I told him, I think you might want to look for another one, but, but I think that the fact that it was left as a commercial, commercial parcel of property requirement, and it even shows that, that two or three acres, whatever it is, shows some apartment or some, some townhome units on there, you know, this particular developer said he's not planning on putting residential on that corner piece. I think that that's, that was kind of the intent that I think we were getting at in looking at this, you know, how do you skin that cap? But I think that if we're truly going to be a walkable community, allowing people to be able to walk to the corner grocery store, casual dining experience, you know, we're, we're not going to get there if we completely develop out as a suburban-type community.
I agree. And I think we've got a lot of commercial, so I guess what was going through my mind is maybe the site selection for some of these townhomes in rather rural...
Well, and we have, yeah, and here's the thing, Gary, we have a lot of commercial now, and a lot of that commercial's being gobbled up by large townhome developments. And I like to be simple. I like homeownership, I like the fact that you're getting people entering down roots. There's a lot of great things about townhomes, right? But, you know, it was stressed to me a long time ago when I was first elected that, you know, we, we, one of the things that Chambley has enjoyed was a large commercially zoned property tax base. And if we continue to allow that commercially zoned property tax base to be eaten up by residential, we'll take that and turn it on its head, and eventually we'll wake up one day and go, you know what? We don't have the commercial we thought we had, because we said, oh, well, we don't need the commercial to go along with those songs. You know, we did that when we looked at vertically mixed use, and I think it's time to look at that when we do the horizontal development of new subdivisions. You know, and in this case, we're, you know, we really don't get, with a few exceptions, single-family detached subdivisions, we're getting townhomes, and I think that they lend themselves very well to having this, this mixed-use component to it. And again, if a developer says they don't do it, I work with developers all the time that, that specialize in, hey, retail, residential, multifamily, hotel, they come together when it comes to doing a town center development, planning your development, something on even as small as, you know, a couple acres. So, I mean, I just, I just don't buy the argument because a developer says they can't do it, that we don't require it.
And the great thing about this is it actually is, works in the gap, it compensates the gap, it has, allows the developer the choice, if he wants these extra incentives, then he can, then he can burn the commercial or get these extra incentives. If he doesn't want these incentives, then he can go back to building, like we've seen over the last two years, the standard, all-townhome type developments.
Any other discussion on this? So right now, where does it stand, Gary? If it moves forward with, well, it, it, it's been presented in one particular fashion. You've presented some options. I guess unless the council says that there are other options, that it will move forward as presented to a, to a first read? Is that where we were at on...
If you wish, yes, sir. The options that are on the table are three and four, which take into account one is, three is a location issue, moving the townhomes closer to the commercial, or else telling them they have to provide their own commercial, and number four is saying, well, in the NR3, we could provide some incentives.
Well, is there anything saying you couldn't do both? Are they in conflict with each other?
No, sir. You could do them both, three and four.
Right. So is there any objection to moving this forward to first read?
I don't know. I'm liking three and four.
I am, I'm also, this is kind of like, I said, this is kind of a spin-off of something I originally brought or put on the list, so obviously I don't support it.
All right, so this will move forward to first read?
Will do.
Next item then is massage and spa establishments.
Sir, Mayor, council, this needs to change, by the way, TA17, just technical, but I use TA16 already. This is a, an attempt to take the massage and spa establishment ordinance, which is being set up, I think, by Adam Cozy, and integrate the UDO changes that need to be made in order to make sure the UDO supports and integrates the special standards of these two establishments, and get rid of the massage therapy establishment, which was the old term. So, these are a series of just minor changes to the UDO in order to create this new language for massage establishment and spa establishment, create the parking standards for it, put it in the use table, saying that the spa establishment would be permitted in the CC, CBC, VC, TOD, MUBC, as well as I and IT. And I think, did I make a mistake? Adam, were we supposed to put spa and massage therapy into the same districts? I think we are. So, actually, that should say, the spa establishment and the massage establishments, both go into those, those zoning districts that I named, CC, CBC, VC, TOD, MUBC, I and IT. Then we would refer back to the, the overall massage and spa establishment ordinance for special regulations, the supplemental use regulations. We have parking, off-street parking requirements for them, and that's really all this does.
Very good. Any other discussion?
Yes, is there an option to further restrict these by different character areas? Is that even an option? You know, we wanted to say, maybe we wanted it in CC, but not all the CC, maybe we only wanted the Peach Street Boulevard corridor, or maybe we don't want it either, or vice versa? Is that even an option, or?
That's an innovative way to think. It's possible to do it that way, since we can define what those character areas are and, and separate them.
CC, Brooklyn Highway is not necessarily the same thing as CC or DC, Peachtree Boulevard.
Why not? Why not?
Do you think it is?
Yes.
Okay. Then I won't, then I won't pursue that.
They're, 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 they're different businesses that are currently operating, but they're, they're both the same. I mean, that's why they're both zoned the same.
And that's the, that's the difficulty, is trying to make a distinction that's rational.
Is there a time, is there a time limit on this, I mean, time restriction on the, on the hours of operation?
That's something that I think is addressed in the other ordinance.
I was adding on in this, I thought it was 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Adam?
It's actually in, I don't know if this is on.
Sorry, there's nobody in here.
It's in the massage and spa establishment ordinance that is up for second read later. Those time restrictions are in there, so when someone goes to the UDO and says, okay, someone wants to do a spa establishment in this zone, it'll, the table will have S for supplemental, which will kick them over to the separate ordinance outside the UDO that has a whole list of things that you've got to do to be a legitimate business, including the new steps that are in that ordinance of coming in, getting a background check, of doing the work permit. But it also includes things like what you can and cannot have in the windows, the types of equipment you can have, or cannot have, rather, in the business, like beds, you know, you can't have beds. And then the hours, which I believe we shortened to, I'm just doing this from memory, but it was, I think it's nine in mine, if I remember correctly.
Really, the only net effect of this UDO amendment is to put it, put them in certain zoning districts and give them parking regulation, otherwise they send it back to the old.
Yeah, give you the example, because the current code says that if you are a massage therapy business, which is the only definition we have right now, and your state license, because that's, again, the only definition we have, is that you are allowed to operate in the city as long as you're in an I or IT district. So, for example, there is a massage, a high-end massage business that is, would like to go in the shopping center, under construction now with the Whole Foods, and it's, it's a very nice business. It does not conform to any definition other than a massage or spa business. If we kept our current codes, they could not go in there. They would have to find an industrial or industrial transitional zone to go in. So that's what the, the new ordinance attempted to do, is to say, you know, there's, there's different types of businesses now within that larger massage category, so we broke those down, but then we needed to have a landing spot if we do want to see those legitimate businesses flourish in traditional retail corridors, subject to the new conditions that are in the proposed ordinance.
Thanks, Adam. Any other questions? So then this will move to first read on Tuesday evening. All right, the next item is approval of the updated MOU, I see, with the cap, each read.
Yes, this is, Mayor, Council, this MOU is exactly the same language as the MOU that was put into effect a year and a half ago. It's just that the old one has expired, and we're recommending that, that the, for the convenience of the airport, that we extend this MOU to April 30, 2017. That gives them some additional time to keep working on the master plan, stormwater master plan for the entire airport.
Very good. Questions? All right, so in review then, it looks like one, six, one through six, seven and eight will move to first read. Is that correct? And then nine will need some type of that, or, no, they don't, some of these don't move to first read, excuse me, they'll just be, seven and eight will move to first read.
Correct, and I also needed to clarify, Mayor, will number six under this city administrator move to a first read?
Number six, yes, that moved to first read also, thank you. I missed that one, and that wasn't one through six, I was thinking six up there, one through six, need to have action taken on them, Tuesday evening. All right, Police Department, yes, Parks and Recreation, oh, sorry. Approval of schedule of traffic rules, regulations and orders, so long as, you know, you know what they are, right?
Right. This is a, this was a request from staff to opt the schedule of traffic rules, regulations and orders that they did today. The, we need to maintain a schedule, excuse me, that is available for public inspection with the city clerk. The, the new schedule had been updated for the annexation from 2014, and also to add the different things that have been passed by those councils since that time. I had to get my staff to out there and get the, bring me back a list of what's present, because I didn't get anything from the county. And so, it was basically, you know, putting it together in the same format that we had before, and this is something that we're forward to, as a basis to go forward with future restrictions or requests from council. One of them being a truck route that's been, came up previously with a plane, you know, we, we're positioned now to see where trucks should be and what streets they shouldn't be on.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I've seen some "no through" traffic signs in the city, and, and I've talked about my Mark when he was here about it, and I don't know if I mentioned you, but I was told that those were not legal and enforceable, and we hacked them up, so what's the story behind that?
That's, that's not, he's not talking about truck restrictions, they were just like, no through traffic, that, that's not permitted.
Well, there's a "no through" traffic on the corner that Huxmore and Sexton Woods, there's a sign there, I believe, it was, last time I looked recently, there was one there, so.
I believe a truck restriction sign, I think that's, the weight restriction.
I don't have to look at that, just get back with you.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say anything about weight restriction, it just says "no through" traffic. The way it was explained to us before is that it's a suggestion.
Okay, yes.
If, you, we all pay taxes to drive on the public roads, and there's nothing that says you can't drive, and there's really no way to say that you were going through. You know, you pull somebody over and, and they say, I'm going to a friend's house around the corner, and that's the way it's always been explained to me.
That's correct.
It's a nice suggestion, but it's, it's, there's nothing really enforceable about it.
I was thinking, that's probably one of the places that probably needs to have a truck restriction, though it does not, as well.
Probably does, but it's just simply a "no through" traffic sign. And we've got them in several places, and you see them all over the country. And it's been explained to me that it's, it's a nice suggestion.
So that's, so can we put suggestive signs up, or we can put suggestion signs up, or we should take the ones down, that they're really just suggestions, and we're just kind of?
No, I think they serve a purpose, that's why they're there.
Right. In fact, I said, I didn't know what, which type of sign that was at that location, but this is what we have, best guess, if not guess, but.
Well, this is a tri- question, what's there?
All kind, all kind of sign to you, and.
All right, very good. Can we move on? We're good. All right, Parks and Recreation, big star, of course, we had a big meeting last night, so. F for Finance, although you did get an A+ earlier, I heard the guy stood right up there and like sung your praises, I'm like, how much did you pay him? Really? And, and thank you to the council for giving so much of the taxpayer dollars in our coffers. All right, GMA lease for garbage trucks. And I would point out, I have this very highlighted thing here that says that we need to take action tonight. Apparently, the garbage trucks turn into pumpkins at midnight, and we can't have that.
Well.
And we're getting close to midnight.
Mayor, Council, what actually happened with this item? We purchased these garbage trucks back in June. The budget called for them to be on a lease. I was actually finalizing another lease, which I thought these were included in, and once I got it all finalized, realized that it wasn't. As you can see on the front page here, the rate actually, the 2.96% interest rate was guaranteed through September the 8th. I got purple confirmation to extend that through today, so that's why I need the action tonight, because that interest rate is only good through, well, tomorrow will be actual when I submit it, but, so, I'm just asking for approval of this lease that was in the budget.
Anybody? Dealer? Dealer?
2.96.
Dealer.
Motion. Motion to approve the GMA lease for garbage trucks, as submitted.
Any discussion? Very good. All is in favor? I pass you an amnesty. Budget amendments.
In your packet, I have a list of budget amendments here. I tried to write all these out, just, I guess, a quick summary. The first budget amendment deals with the funds needed for the retirement of the city manager. Two through six all deal with just the increase in development activity in the city, the expenditures that we have to have for the, for the permits, issuing permits and things like that. A lot of that is passed through. And depending on when you downloaded the packet, I added two more amendments. Number seven is for the property that was purchased on Canfield Drive. We received a property tax bill that we have, that we have to pay because we purchased the property after the beginning of the year. So it's based on the status of the property at the beginning of the year, January 31st, so we have to pay that bill. And then the other amendment that I added was, was just some clarification on a motion that was made back in June for an IGA with the DDA. I believe there was a, the, the motion was made to approve the, with the IGA, but not the funds that were, that was associated. So I just want to make sure for the auditors that we have, clearly have, that those funds were approved to be paid.
Yes, sir. Just real quick, we bought that house on Canfield, and we are paying the entire year. The former seller's not paying, they're prorated.
They're prorated.
Are they not prorated?
Not from what I understand.
So maybe they just bought it unconditionally, then it just assumed the, the tax liability?
Yes, I don't, I'll go back and review the agreement, but I don't think I saw anything in the agreement.
That would, that would be different. Okay, anything else?
Is this, are these two items, where are they? Seven and eight?
They were a little later.
Okay.
I also gave you a handout. Yes.
Are we ready? G for Public Works. Resolution to adopt an official list of streets in the city. We don't have officials. Anybody? Anybody?
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is a resolution to adopt the official list of streets for Jihad.
What's that? Very good. Let's all give Reginald a round of applause, but I'm telling you, Wes, Adam, I'm confused by that, because that is my. He just became my favorite department head. All right, any questions about that? All right, H for Economic Development. One massage or spa establishment ordinance fee resolution. It's our spa and massage night. We all get like massages after this, spa side deal. That, that's true.
This is. Approving fees that go along with the ordinance, because we used to improve it better tonight, I think. To, the fee structure in place for the new license and work permits, and the investigative fee is the same thing that people would be willing to this department to give, fingerprint it in background check.
This compared to other cities?
Great question. Very similar, in line with other cities, and, but for some of these, in the empirical quote, you, exactly, but it has to relate to the task that we perform as well. That's why they're not put to ordinance, in line with the work job.
Do the other jurisdictions do the background checks that part of proposing?
Yes, but I don't know if they do nationwide, that would be a question, since not all of ours are nationwide, too, although the language in the ordinance, if we submit it to, I believe, GBI, then we could get that for, for it submitted.
It is a lengthy process, but they have to have a certain language in their ordinance to do that, sort of similar to what we have with the adult entertainment permit process. We wrote that language into this one as well, so.
But we'll have to apply for the nationwide, but the background check, yes, and other cities do the background check. I don't know if they do the nationwide.
So would it be fair to say that we have the, a heightened sense of security in our process, but there is not really much of a burden seen by the applicant?
I would do that.
All right, anything else? Thank you, Mr. Economic Director.
Thank you.
Just more quick, and I'll vote, it'd be my favorite. Board, authorities and committees, I don't believe we have anything this evening to hear from. So then City Attorney, we had a series of items that will move to first read. Second read, City Attorney will read a, four second reads on Tuesday evening, under Mayor and Council items, looks like we don't have anything tonight. Just kidding. Tom had 2017 Shamley Fun Mud Run. Tried to say that three times, it looked like.
Over the past two years, the Shamley Middle School Education Foundation has sponsored an event called the Shamley Fun Mud Run, which is a muddy obstacle 5K and 3K for students and for adults. The city has participated in both years as a co-sponsor of the event by allocating resources to the event to include public safety and public works and other logistics involved administratively from the staff. We would ask that we do that again. The Shamley Fun Mud Run has raised over $65,000 for the benefit, the direct benefit of the students and teachers at Shamley Middle School, and we think it's a very positive economic engine for the city, benefits the students and the teachers, and is just a great event for the community. We hope that, I would hope that the event, which is scheduled for April, the 29th, 2017, could gain our approval again on Tuesday.
Questions, comments? Very good. Just looking right along here. Bet Darren didn't have anything on there, but. Does it come in? No. Come on up, man, you got three minutes, tell you who you are, where you live, what's on your mind? We probably not the last.
Random work sheet, 3622 Road. Thank you all for getting through with the traffic calming, some of the load going, I guess, but I was told I could go ahead and start collecting. But I was told I could go ahead and start collecting signatures, which we have. We are looking to try to implement it on Teal Road, or a portion of Teal Road and all Sexton Woods Road or Drive and Sexton Woods subdivision. And everybody's been really supportive of it. They're excited about it and they want to see it go through. And I'd like to say, who gets the petition? It's a petition to implement traffic calming, signed by well over 50% of residents.
Very good. Yeah. Probably the development. All right. Anything else, Mr. Richard?
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Come on. I'm about to have my gavel. Oh, I've been waiting to do that.